Recording in progress.
You all set, Madam Chair?
Can you show us and say God?
I don't see it here. I don't see it over here either.
All good.
Here we go. Good evening, Happy New Year, and welcome everyone to the January 4th, 2023 Yarmouth Planning Board meeting. I am Joanne Crowley, Chair. As this is a hybrid meeting involving both in-person and remote participants, I read the following statement into the record. This is to formally advise that as required by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 38, Paragraphs 18 to 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, and an Act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, signed into law on June 16, 2021. The Yarmouth Planning Board will hold a public meeting on Wednesday, January 4th, 2023, at 5:30 PM in the Hearing Room, Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. 02664. The public is welcome to attend via remote access provided on the meeting agenda posted on the town website under the Agenda and Minutes tab by selecting Planning Board. I will begin by taking roll call. Brad Goodwin.
Present.
Susan Britta.
Present.
Will Rubenstein.
Present.
Chris Vincent. Jim Saban.
Present.
Ken Smith. Joanne Crowley, present. Seeing we have a quorum present, I'll now call the meeting to order. For remote public participation during the public comment period, or at my discretion during this meeting, I'll invite the audience to comment. Online audience members can use the Raise Hand button to notify the Chair. Dial-in audience members should press *9 on their phones. All audience members will be muted until you are recognized by me to participate. Once recognized, audience members are asked to identify themselves by first and last name and affiliation for the public record. Let me start by asking you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, my God, and his people, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you. I would like to just make one small public announcement. We do have a seventh member of the Planning Board who has been nominated and approved by the Board of Selectmen, Ken Smith. He was unable to join us this evening, but will be joining us at future meetings, and we're very pleased to have him as part of our team. He's a great guy. With that, let me start with the first item on our agenda is another look at the draft Housing Production Plan. Joining us this evening in person is Marcia Bissell from the Community Housing Committee, and we have remotely members of the committee, Lee Hamilton. Mary Wagon, I'm sorry, is our Housing Administrator. She's joining us remotely as well. Mary, who else might be joining us remotely?
So I'm on Zoom, and I can see two county Yarmouth blocks, and Lee Hamilton, and myself, and that's it.
Lorraine Doyle is also on. Oh, the Chair, Lorraine Doyle?
She's on the list.
Okay, great. Welcome, Lorraine. I'm glad you could join us. Lorraine is the Chair. At our last meeting on December 7th, 2022, the Community Housing Committee and Mary Wagon, the Yarmouth Affordable Housing Administrator, presented the Yarmouth Housing Production Plan. After lengthy discussion and acknowledgement of public opinions expressed during the public hearing, the Planning Board did not feel comfortable endorsing the draft HPP as it was written then. In our packets is a redlined version of the revised plan, which addresses the following modifications that we requested. The change in reference from ADUs to what is technically in our bylaw accessory apartments, the language throughout. Modify the timeframe for the zoning amendments for accessory apartments into the one-to-two-year period rather than the three-to-five-year period. Add glossary and definitions. Under action items, create the creation of a written plan for the Affordable Housing Trust. In particular, we looked at Table 4-1 in detail, and we asked that there be language added to that. List of project goals, that they are conceptual in nature, not an endorsement or an approval of any one project. We asked if specific addresses needed to be included, and I see that some of those changes have been made. Mary, thank you. We also added that we would encourage town citizens to work more closely with the Yarmouth Housing Authority and have a fairly significant note with regarding to the proposed development on Forest Road in particular. We also asked that public comments and responses be included as an appendix to the HPP, and that they add the Natural Resource Protection and Housing Priority Areas map and discussion document that had been prepared by the Association to Preserve Cape Cod, APCC. And as I read through the changes in the redlined version, Mary, I see that you have, I think, accommodated all of our requests. But I would like to open it up to other members of the Board for any comments, questions, or discussion with regard to the revised HPP. Yes, Susan Britta.
Just on the, Mary, on the glossary, could you, I noticed on the table 4-1, the term HO was used. Could you add that to the glossary so the people know that means, I guess it means Housing Authority?
I'm sorry, so the big table, 4-1, what word did you want defined?
Under, for example, look at year four, the third one down, it says scat site infill- HO.
Yep, so at the bottom of that chart, in the main HPP, that's defined. That means homeownership.
Homeownership. Where is the bottom of the chart?
In the redlined version.
I see, I got it, okay.
Yep, okay, thank you.
Okay. And these are not the items in that chart, are they in priority order?
No, they're on chronological order.
Okay.
Anyone else with questions? Mr. Saban?
Hold on next. Mary, thank you for your efforts to address some of these concerns that we had. Just in flipping through this, I quickly caught something that I'm kind of wondering about, and it is, let me get back to it, I'm sorry. So on the appendix seven, we name names in the quotes that people gave us, and I'm wondering if that's necessary.
So people gave public comment, and they put their names in those public comments. So, I mean, if you want for the use of the HPP, we could just use initials.
You know, I think that might be better unless we've asked, I guess you don't really have to ask permission, but it'd probably be kind of nice to know that, hey, you're quoting my name, and you're not mine, but some of these people may. So maybe we could, if that wouldn't be too much, just use their initials instead of full names of the individuals who've made the quote and comments. They're all good comments, but.
Excellent. Good suggestion. Will do.
Other than that, I appreciate all the efforts. I like all the changes that they don't really commit us, but we point out that these are potential. So thank you.
I'm Mr. Rubenstein.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd also like to say thank you for addressing the changes in this, especially the glossary, which, let's just say I learned a couple things. And that is appreciated. I just want to point out on page 97, if you could turn there, there is a, like a pull-out box on the right. I just think it got cut off a little early. It doesn't end. It's sort of either a fragment or a run-on sentence, and I just wanted to point that out. If you could just finish that thought inside that box. That's just the old college newspaper guy in me. Thank you.
Love it.
And Mary, I just had one.
You're right. Thank you.
Having worked for a short time as a, at a newspaper, I feel like I was a bit of a copy editor, but on my special request to use the language accessory apartments, I noticed that there were a couple of pages that still had ADU. If I could share them with you, I noticed that the pages were renumbered from the original by one. Am I, do I have that right?
Yes.
So these pages might be off by one, but I don't think so. On page 58, 72, what appears to be now 78, and 79, those pages still refer to ADU. I know where you're quoting ADU as a reference. I didn't tamper with that, but if you could just take a quick look at those, we'd appreciate that.
Will do.
Any other comments?
Please.
Mr. Goodwin.
First of all, Marcia and Lee, Lorraine, you guys have all done a wonderful job. I see the work we do, and you lead the way. So thank you for the volunteering you do. This is not an easy task. Mary, of course, you've got the bullwhip, and you do a marvelous job moving us all along. The only question I have, and it's just a question, is no, I always respect Kieran Healy for what he's done for the town in providing a lot of information and feet on the ground. He quotes the 750 square feet, and I see the 700 square feet, and it's not like Mr. Healy to make a mistake. So are these recent changes, or did all our eyes go in the wrong time, or what? I was just confused on that.
You're right, Brad. He was off by 50 square feet, but it'll, when we meet with him and go through, you know, we'd like him to show us some examples when we look at the Affordable Housing Standards with respect to unit sizes, because he does a lot of back-of-the-envelope calculations on new developments, considering these unit sizes. You know, that plus or minus 50 square feet is not going to matter. He's going to make his case about what the ideal size should be for our affordable units in town for friendly 40Bs.
Thank you. And on Affordable Housing Trust, I hope we're going to meet again soon. It's been tough getting a quorum for those watching at home and those here in the room due to the complexities of everybody's schedule, and then the Lieutenant, the Governor and the Lieutenant Governor-elect showing up today, yesterday threw us a curveball. But it says here that we need goals or something. Can we create those goals on our own, or are you expecting the Selectmen to enforce those, like put those goals on us? What are you seeking on that?
I think the Affordable Trust should, in consideration of the update to the HPP and our funding, right, because the current round for community preservation funds is extremely competitive, should make some goals, three-year goals, to kind of match with the HPP, whether they want to go into housing services or keep with the brick and mortar production of affordable housing. There's a, it's just during my last meeting with you, it just, you know, came up, like, yeah, we have this money that's a powerful, we have this trust, that's a realty trust, it's a very powerful tool to make affordable housing, and we've got a very engaged group of trustees. It's probably time to put a plan into writing for the trust, and that would be created by the trust.
Okay. I just, you know, we've, as you've rightly pointed out here in this document, one of our buy-down programs was really huge for us for a number of years, but with the price accentuating so fast, that's why we're walking away from that. So you put that in writing that that's supposed to be one of our goals. It may, you know, smack up against reality, but so long as there's some flexibility in there, that's great. Thank you very much for your time, and Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. Thank you, Mary. I'd also just like to make one comment to recognize that our member of the Planning Board that is also on the CHC is Mr. Goodwin. So he has drawn double duty here in helping produce this very comprehensive plan. So Planning Board, thanks you, Brad, so much, and we thank the Community Housing Committee for their work on this. I'd like the Board to entertain a motion that we endorse the Yarmouth Housing Production Plan as amended this evening, and recommend the plan to the Board of Selectmen and the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
That was a great job.
We'll do a roll call. Brad Goodwin?
Aye.
Susan Britta?
Aye.
Will Rubenstein?
Aye.
Jim Saban?
Aye.
Joanne Crowley, aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Mary, and all the members of the committee. Marcia, thank you for coming this evening. We appreciate it. Thank you all for all your hard work.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Did an amazing job, Mary, and Lee and Marcia.
Thank you. And thank you for carefully reading it. I really appreciate all your comments. I'm going to stay for the accessory apartment.
We do read them, Mary. We do read them. Okay, next up on our agenda. Have a couple of things with regard to our discussions, continuing discussions on the accessory apartment bylaw. As we began these discussions back on November 16th, we continued them at our last meeting on December 7th, and in fact, on December 12th, there was another meeting with the Community Housing Committee. Again, they reached out to us to help us, Lorraine Doyle in particular, reached out to me and asked that they offer some assistance in organizing a listening session, which was held on December 12th. And the members of the Community Housing Committee and the Planning Board were there, and the public, in terms of the organization of the meeting, used the same exact discussion points that the Board has been using all along. So the documents that we use to initiate and try to initiate some discussion were the same ones that the Planning Board is continuing to use in our discussions. In our packets is a document that Kathy has put together, which summarized that meeting, and it contains a fair amount of detail. And so I would encourage Board members to take a close look at that. Also included in our correspondence with regard to that meeting is a fairly extensive email with attachments from a Mr. Luke Chapman, who attended the session virtually, but followed up by sending in some comments with regard to his concern about enforcement, which was one of the main concerns that we heard at the listening session. And his focus is on a different angle on financial penalties for noncompliance. And so in our packets, there is some background work that Mr. Chapman put together on what other towns are doing, what their restrictions are, and what their enforcements are. They, it is his best shot at understanding what the restrictions and enforcement policies are, but I'd just draw your attention to that as members of the Board. And I thank Mr. Chapman for taking the time to do that for us. We will look closely at that and use it as a reference document to some degree.
Chair?
Yes.
Just a point of reference, I'm speaking now as a member of an advertising community. I just want to make clear here in a meeting that I don't know where Mr. Chapman is coming from, and I mean this in the clearest of tones. This is Delmar, is sort of like a VRBO business on the local level. So I'm appreciative he's helping us out. I just don't know if he's for ADUs to have some of his employees find a place to live, or to have ADUs so his roles can be expanded to have other properties to rent in here in Barnstable County. I did a double take when I saw his name, because I've called on them before for advertising, and I don't know Mr. Chapman, because I deal with people underneath him, but I know the email address. So if we could just take his comments with one grain of salt out of 100, that'd be fine.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. I appreciate that. Yes, it is relevant and important that we note who he is and what he does. Thank you. I appreciate that. Overall, I thought the session was informative. There were maybe 20 or so people there, Kathy, as I recall.
Sounds about right.
Yeah. And much of what we heard, we had heard at the public hearings with regard to the petitioned article at special town meeting. But I think it did, I did, it went to meet the Planning Board's objective to better understand and listen again to the concerns and interests of the public as we move forward with revisions to this bylaw. So from my perspective, and perhaps others, I think Susan, you were there, there were some other members. We'll have another public hearing on this in the near future as we move forward. And again, I would reference the minutes that Kathy had put together on that. Any comments you'd like to make, Kathy, with regard to the listening session, or Marcia, you were there as well. There were other members, Mary was here as well.
I just want to give Mary Wagon credit. She's the one who put together the comments, the minutes for all the comments of the individual people. I think it is similar to a lot of the things that we had heard previously, but it was nice to hear, you know, some answers to our specific questions. There was also a lot of, I'm not quite, I don't really know how to answer some of the questions in inquiries that we made, and I think that might end up being something where the Planning Board will have to decide and then present that to the public and see how it goes.
Mary, if you would like to comment at all on your perspectives from the listening session, I'd appreciate it.
I love listening sessions, so I just really appreciate you going forward with that idea. I thought that some of the public hearings, you know, can get intense pretty quick. You know, I sit on the Planning Board in my town, and we've done that. When there's heated debate at these public hearings, we go to listening sessions, and I hope it all works out well for Yarmouth.
Thank you. So let's move on to our next piece of this discussion on accessory dwelling units. Kathy has put up on the screen the bylaw draft number one. Draft number one.
I made some edits since then, and this is actually draft number two.
Oh, we're already up to number two, okay.
You'll see the red lines in here. They're very minor.
Kathy and I did have a chance to review this in some detail today, so she may have incorporated some suggestions and some edits that I had suggested. So Kathy, I'm going to turn it over to you to walk us through what we have here.
I did start trying to do a redline edit of Section 407, which is our accessory apartments bylaw, and it just got too convoluted. When I was trying to move things around, it just ended up all being red and blue and not particularly helpful. So in your packets, I did include the original 407, so you could kind of reference back and forth. And I did send out the redline earlier today, just to kind of show you how difficult it kind of is to follow. I think we're making enough substantial changes that this probably will end up being a remove-and-replace situation article at annual town meeting if we get that far, versus trying to make edits to specific sections. The first section that we're looking at here is the purpose and intent, and I think I tried to take into consideration all of the things that we heard at the various public meetings and listening sessions. So really, the intent of the bylaw as listed here is to broaden the range of housing choices available to residents by increasing the number of smaller dwelling units available in Yarmouth for year-round rental, providing housing opportunities to support a strong, stable, and diverse year-round community and sustainable local workforce. We want housing for our workforce. Prevent displacement of local residents. We heard a lot about people not being able to afford to stay on Cape Cod, and also facilitating that aging in place for our senior citizens. Number three kind of addresses is that we currently have a family-related accessory apartment, so there are people who are interested in this as an opportunity for family members to live in close proximity, but also have that separate living space for just a little autonomy for family members and a little more privacy. Number four is highlighted because this is an issue that we had kind of discussed back and forth and really haven't made a decision on, is providing a means to retain the affordability of accessory apartments through rent limitations, and we'll discuss that as we move forward. Number five is I think we needed to some, in some way, address the fact that we need to not just solve a housing problem and create an environmental problem, that we're trying to blend the two a little bit. So we're trying to add, address the need for additional rental housing units without significantly impacting our environmental resources. And you'll see later, there's a provision that kind of talks a little bit about that. And the last one gets back to the desire to protect the character, appearance, and property values of single-family residential neighborhoods.
So I'd like to, the way, I think I'd like to go forward, unless others have a suggestion, is that we review each of these sections and get a sense, a consensus about agreement or not on the language that we have here, knowing that it can and will change. But in discussing each section, we review in detail what it says right now. So with regard to this, purpose and intent, I welcome comments from the Board. Susan Britta.
First of all, Kathy, do you want to discuss number four now, or should we save that till the end? I just don't, I don't even understand what that means.
We can probably save that one to the end, because we talk about it in a little bit more detail later.
Okay, all right. I would move, based on the current section, you know, bylaw that we have, I would move five and six up closer to the top. I think they're very important, particularly protecting the character. I think the current bylaws, that's the very second sentence. So I don't think that being at the, I assume these are in priority order, correct?
They're not.
Well, they're numbered. So I would assume, I'd just move those two comments further to the top. And especially at the listing session, there were several comments about the environmental impact, you know, the water impact on water and septic systems. Since then, there have been several articles, one really devastating article a couple weeks ago in the New York Times about water on the Cape, and it was really very, very chilling to read it. So I think we ought to, that to me was a very important issue. I never thought it was until I heard the public session, and then especially a lot of the people in the audience were very concerned about adding to the current burden. So I would move those two notions further to the top under purpose and intent.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, let's, we'll move on.
So we discussed in one of our discussion topics was that not all properties would be eligible for an accessory apartment. So this just identifies the following types of properties or developments that are not eligible. As Mary noted in our previous meeting, that deed restricted affordable housing units, it's in their restriction that they can't have any rental units. We talked about all lots developed under a comprehensive permit or a Chapter 40B, which already has higher density levels than our current zoning, as not being eligible, and then lots with more than one single-family dwelling unit on it.
Susan?
Deed restrictions, are deed restrictions in perpetuity?
Some are, some aren't.
Does it depend on the, does it depend on the deed? Does it depend on what the deed says?
I think Mary might be able to answer that. She's nodding her head yes.
Mary Wagon?
The vast majority are.
Are permanent?
Yes.
But some are not.
Some are.
Some are not.
Yeah, back in the day, back in the day, there were only 40, I'm sorry, I'm on Zoom, so I'm a little out of sync of, I'm sorry, I spoke over you, but some of them were only for 15 years, some were only 40 years in length, but now they're all in perpetuity.
Okay. Any other comments on eligibility? Okay, moving on, general standards and provisions.
I think it should be clear that this particular section, all accessory apartments shall adhere to the following minimum requirements. This is meant to be the minimum requirements that everybody should adhere to, and this is where I added in that the comment about these provisions are not subject to variance. So whether you need it by right or special permit, these are the list of things that, all the rules that everyone needs to follow, and you can't get a variance for it. So I think that's important to highlight that particular section. So. So the first one is, it's in our standard one, accessory apartments shall be complete in separate housekeeping units that function independently from a primary single-family dwelling unit, and shall include sleeping, cooking, and sanitary facilities. Only one accessory apartment, oops, per lot shall be allowed. Again, that's in our bylaw currently. I don't know why I'm echoing, I'm sorry. And then number three is a little bit different, is dimensional requirements. Right now, we have a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. That's been left in there. Because this, these are sections that are not allowed for, any of these provisions cannot be given, can be changed through a variance. I did include that we cannot, lots developed with an accessory apartment- with an accessory apartment shall not exceed the allowable building coverage, because people were concerned about that. And I also included new construction or additions shall not exceed the maximum allowable building height. If we didn't have those in there, and I just want to make sure that people didn't think that they could get a variance for that. And then number D is new detached, new detached accessory structures that include an accessory apartment must meet the dimensional requirements of 203.5. This is, I know, somewhat up for discussion.
Susan, Ms. Britta.
Okay, 203.5, is that the 800 square foot? They can't be any larger than 800 square feet?
No, that's a section that says, what are the minimum lot sizes? What are your minimum front, side, and rear setbacks? What's the maximum building coverage that you can have on your property?
Because there was discussion about increasing the size of these units to 900 square feet.
That's later. We're coming to that. We're coming to that.
Okay, I just want to make a comment. If that is something that the board thinks is, should be encouraged and should be put forth, I would insist that the 10,000 square feet be raised to 15,000. If we're going to increase the size of the unit, I would increase the size of the lot. That issue, the 10,000 square foot came up at the public hearing, I think one person commented on, I think it was in terms of by right versus by, and if we were going to do something by right, maybe increase the size of the lot, but there was some minimum discussion about it. But if we are, if we do decide to increase the size of the units, and there was some talk about doing that, then I would put forth that we increase the size of the lot to 15,000 to accommodate the increase in the size of the dwelling unit.
I think as we get through, we're going to see some combinations and permutations of that. But one thing I want to stress is that I would like not to walk back from the things we already have in the accessory apartment bylaw. Let's not diminish what we already have.
We're not diminishing it, we're increasing it.
The 10,000 square feet is what we have right now.
Correct. And we have 800 square feet right now.
That's correct, that's correct.
But diminishing it would be to go to 5,000 and 600.
Or no, no minimum lot size.
Yeah, well, no.
I would like to, I mean diminish, you're right, it's a relative word. Very relative. But my sense is, to the degree that there are aspects that we've been living with for quite a while, and that seem to be okay, let's, and this was several suggestions that were made at the listening session, let's not try to do everything all at once. Maybe we need to just get something that's better. And so that's my only concern, is that we don't walk back from things we've already struggled to get, and we now have. So, and the 10,000 is one of them.
But I would argue, Joanna, that we are looking at everything in this bylaw. We are actually creating one, because we've never had one before. So we're creating one, and if we are going to look at all facets, then we look at all facets.
We're actually replacing one. I don't believe we're creating a new one, we're actually replacing an existing one, and I think that's, I think you're both saying similar.
Same thing, yeah, okay. So let's just go to what we have in front of us here on dimensional requirements. And actually, one, what have we got? Kathy, you going to continue? You want to do one edit?
I guess, the dimensional requirements, I have a question, I think it might be good to get some input on it. Can I just, there's two questions. One is, do new detached accessory structures need to meet the current setback requirements? And then also, if you're expanding, do you want to meet the current setbacks? Or would you be comfortable allowing, we had talked about this before, the grandfathered rights that are allowed under section 104?
Did we just get past the dimensional requirements, and I missed that?
No, we're talking about them right now.
Yeah. If we put it in context, I was looking at this little sheet regarding our lot sizes and the sizes of the homes that we currently have, I think that sort of goes to the conversation we're trying to have right now about new construction, what setbacks do they have to meet, what requirements? Do we grandfather, do we, given what we have, we have very dense small lots as it is.
Well, that's where, I think Kathy, if I'm, help me here, under dimensional requirements, lots, I mean, B, C, and D are what we're trying to focus on. And lots with an accessory apartment, there is an allowable building coverage right now.
And it shall not exceed, exactly.
So are we, do we, yeah, Ms. Grilles, building commissioner?
Sit here.
Amasha, you relieve from the front desk if you'd like to.
You're relieved of duty.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mark Grilles, building commissioner. I think what Kathy's saying with B, C, and D is that currently, if somebody wanted to build, for instance, a garage, and the required setbacks, I don't have any place else on their lot to put it, they have the right to apply for a variance through the zoning board of appeals to put that garage there. What Kathy's saying with this, with the starting sentence, is that these provisions are not subject to a variance. So the people that are creating these structures, they're not eligible to build a new structure in the required setbacks. That's what she's saying with this section of the bylaw.
That's part of it, and then I think basically saying, D is saying, if you're building a new detached structure, you don't get any grandfather, which I don't think you do anyway.
You don't, that's a variance, and they're eligible for a variance, and that's what I'm saying. Your first sentence pretty much spells it out, you're not eligible.
Then the question then becomes, if you're adding an expansion, right now, you do get grandfathered rights under 104 if you have a non-conforming structure.
Provided you do not increase the nonconformity.
And that gets back to like, if you have a nonconforming structure that's 10 feet from your side yard setback, you want to extend in the back another 20 feet, you're not in the backyard setback, but you're in, you're still in that 10-foot side yard setback, that's not deemed increasing the nonconformity, and you can get a building permit from Mark if you don't build, if you don't increase the height. If you want to increase the height and you're in the setback, then you're grandfathered, and you have to get a special permit from the zoning board of appeals to increase the height. Versus this, if you want to say, a minimum standard, is that all expansions need to meet the current setbacks, then they wouldn't be able to continue with that 10-foot back. It may be difficult for people to do that with smaller lots and septic systems and that type of thing. This is the minimum standards, and everyone has to adhere to it, so I think we need to be careful what we include in this bucket. But I want to bring it up to you guys. I don't, I got the impression previously that you guys weren't all interested in having it meet the current minimum, but allowing people to have the current rights that they have, whether it's, as Chris said, a 900-square-foot family room, or a 900-square-foot accessory apartment built in the back of a house.
You be jumping in, Madam?
Yes, you may, Mr. Saban.
So if I could just, I apologize, if I can back up a little bit and ask that, when we look at number one, and we say cooking and sanitary facilities, what's a cooking facility? A hot plate, or do they have to have a, so is there a definition somewhere of what that is, so that somebody understands that it's not simply?
Microwave is a cooking appliance. So if you could cook in there, it's considered a dwelling unit. So this is the definition of a dwelling unit, even in the building code.
That's a good question, I know Mary probably has an answer, but in the 2019 changes, we actually did specify more information on what constituted a kitchen, and had like a minimum standards for the kitchen. That's certainly something that we could include back in, if that's of interest to the.
Is it something that, if it's a common issue of, well, what's my kitchen, then maybe we need to have a definition, but if it's not something that's really an issue, then I don't think we do.
Maybe Mary.
Superintendent doesn't seem to think that's too much of an issue, so.
And if it's, yeah, if it's a, if it's a studio, obviously, there wouldn't be, well, there wouldn't necessarily be a kitchen, right? Kitchen, room as a room.
I mean, do they need a stove, or do they need an oven?
All you need is a cooking appliance.
It's not a dwelling unit if they don't have a kitchen, it's just a bedroom.
Yep.
Didn't we run into this?
Cooking appliance.
Yes.
Didn't we run into this with the hotels, with whether they have a kitchen in the hotel units? Wasn't that, that's why it kind of come into my head, so that if you think it's an issue, then maybe we should address it. The other thing I wanted to bring up is the issue of variances. I'm hesitant to say nothing can have a variance, because I was always taught there's an exception to every rule. And there may be that case where somebody deserves a variance, but it doesn't meet the criteria. So, you know, I'm kind of hesitant, I'm not saying not new variances, not restrictive variances, but I'm hesitant to say this is a minimum and there is no wiggle room, because there's always wiggle room in something.
I think in passing it at annual town meeting, there will be concerns, I think, by people, and I think the number of people who really need, who are truly the exception to the rule, and would truly qualify for the definition of a variance, is very few people.
I mean, they grant very few variances now, for anything. I guess that, I'm glad you brought this up, Mr. Saban, because the language, I guess, these provisions are not subject to a variance, they're not subject to, they're not eligible for a variance request. Is that what we're saying? They can't, they can't submit an application for a variance. Okay. That clarified, that clarified for me, too.
I think some of that language could, I think the language gets a little wonky by saying subject to. I think, I think the chair, the chair makes some reasonable suggestions about how to make it a little more plain English for someone who's just sort of wading into this.
You're not eligible to apply for a variance. Something like that?
That's it. These provisions are not eligible for application for variance.
I guess I'm okay with that with one and two, but the dimensional requirements, when I'm still trying to get my hands around some of the issue with regards to, if you remember what was just brought up with Mr. Vincent, if you do that 900-square-foot addition, are we saying if it's an accessory unit, then you get no variance because the coverage is going to be different? But you would have if it was a.
The, in letter D says new detached, so it would be a separate, it wouldn't be an addition, it would be a detached structure.
So, but right now, I could you build that two-car detached garage?
Provided you're not in the setbacks, yes.
So I, B, C, and D, as I understand it, is meant to say, going forward, we have some rules. We have some boundaries on what you can build. And all we're suggesting is, going forward, that those are the rules everybody's got to follow. That you might have been grandfathered before, you might have been grandfathered from 1910, but we're sorry, we just can't, in order to get some consensus that hopefully we can get through town meeting, and as a, as a planning board, we're kind of a microcosm of the, of the, of the town meeting. I mean, if we can come to some agreement, maybe town meeting can come to some agreement.
From Madam Chairman.
Yeah, so that's what, I'm just, I'm really just asking that as a question going forward. We're saying, you were grandfathered for some things, and you've probably taken advantage of them. You've probably done, made your house go back and continue to be nonconforming because you could. But maybe for this new thing, going forward, this is the, these are kind of the boundaries, the limits, that we would like everyone to consistently follow.
I guess my concern is, can we take away somebody's pre-existing nonconforming right? I built the house in a 20,000 script.
No, this is, this is related to the accessory apartment itself.
Right, but I heard the chair say that you're pre-existing, so too bad, words to that effect. We can't take away what they've already got.
Oh, no, 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 but going forward, if you want, no, going forward, if you want something new on, about your place, whether it's in the house, attached to the house, you know, you want to rebuild your garage, we have, we have a big bright orange book that's called the zoning bylaw, and everybody's got to follow it. Because otherwise, there'll be no rules, because every lot is different in town. Think about it, right? If you know.
So, but I, I guess I'm a little confused here. I want to build a two-car garage, that's okay.
You have to meet the minimum setbacks.
You don't meet the setbacks, yes. And if you meet the setbacks.
As I'm making a garage, I want to build that same footprint, I want to do an accessory apartment.
And you got to meet the minimum setbacks. As long as it meets the setbacks.
Okay, so one, it doesn't make a difference.
That's the same.
Okay, good. That's what I want to make sure in my head, that, okay, I can build a garage, or I can build a unit, but I, don't tell me I can't build a unit if I can build a garage.
That's why that's in there. None of these things are taking away any of the grandfathered rights. The only thing that's highlighted in the gray there, what about meeting dimensional standards for expansions? That's the case where you might consider not allowing grandfathering, and that would take away some rights. That's why it's highlighted there for discussion purposes. So if, my example, what number are we on Kathy?
The bottom, at the very bottom. Oh, great.
That's your draft, too.
That's the updated, that's the updated version.
Sorry. This has been updated a little bit from the one you have.
And I think part of the discussion, Jim, when we had that back in the, I think the public session, was the garage and the patio and whatever is wholly consistent with a residential addition to your house. It's consistent with the residential nature of a neighborhood. ADUs are wholly inconsistent. They are doubling, yes, they are, they are doubling, they are doubling the density of a residential neighborhood. And they are jeopardizing the definition of a residential neighborhood. That's why we have a separate bylaw, and people want to have, as Kathy said, everyone gets to the starting line at the same point. These are all the things you must, this is just starting line, right here. You know, your minimum size lot, dimensional requirements, and then from there, you go forward. So that's why there was an extra sort of cautionary tone on dimensions and lot size and grandfathering, and what's allowed and what's not allowed. Because what Mark does is wholly consistent with residential development.
Yes, Mr. Grilles.
The highlighted section there, the highlighted sentence is, what about meeting dimensional standards for expansions? That should say of pre-existing nonconforming structures. So if you wanted to add an addition to your existing nonconforming structure, and you didn't encroach any closer to any existing, if you're already nonconforming, and you don't get any closer to the property line, I can issue a permit by right. I think that's what that sentence, that's what that question is.
No, I wouldn't put anything in there if that's the circumstance, because you would just, that would be allowing the continuation of the grandfather. This is saying, if you have a nonconforming structure, and you want to build an expansion, you have to meet the current setbacks. Do you want to put that in, or do you not want to put that in? Because right now, you could extend it in the back 10 feet, but the setback might be 20 feet. I'm not saying one way or the other, I'm just asking you guys whether you want to have that.
You're saying if the pre-existing nonconforming use exists, side yard setback is 10, but it's five, they can't continue the five.
That's the point, yes. They'd have to go to the current.
You got to come into the 21st century.
Would they have to bring that five back, too?
No, no, no.
Okay.
I don't think that's what that's saying.
No, not at all.
Some people have to chop up pieces of houses to move, you laugh, but I've seen it.
This is if you're adding an expansion to a nonconforming structure, you're not eligible for the grandfathering for this particular use. If you want.
For this use.
Bite at the apple, you have to meet the setback. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm okay with that.
Mr. Rubenstein.
I'm thinking.
Okay.
I'm going to think a little more.
We'll work up some language on that, and we can talk about it.
Okay.
The other thing, just so we can move on in regards to minimum lot size, we had a nice report that I think Mr. Nicconello provided us with the breakdown of lot sizes.
Right.
Is there a sweet spot on that? In other words, are there significantly 15,000 square foot lots, or we?
20% of the lots are less than 10,000 square feet. 60% are less than 20,000 square feet, I mean, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
80% are less than 20,000 square feet, and 90% are less than 30,000 square feet.
We got that last week, last meeting.
I'm wondering what that 15 is.
That makes sense.
That's it.
Do you want, I mean, I can ask the assessors to tell me what.
Well, if we cut it off at 15, and find out that the sweet spot is 14, then maybe we should be thinking about that.
It wouldn't be 14.
What is that sweet spot?
What difference does it make?
The max number of units.
What that says to me is 80% of the lots in town.
It's 10 and above.
Or above 10, 80%.
Yeah.
That's pretty good. That's pretty good.
And is also consistent with some of the neighborhoods that we've heard from, who have been very concerned about smaller lot sizes being eligible for ADUs.
The other thing you can do, just to pigeonhole off what Mr. Chapman brought to the table with his email, you'll notice other towns would, would. with his email, you'll notice other towns would, would not allow the ADU to go in certain areas of their town. So if there's one area of Yarmouth that we think is, should be overly protected, even if it's just to get it through town meeting, you may want to try that. You know, it's something to think about.
Sorry, how would you propose doing that? With a village basis?
The way they did it in, they did it by zoning districts in most of the other towns, but I think one of the towns did it almost by, I don't want to say roads, but they did it by area. But we could look at that.
Well, I was just trying to translate for our town.
For example, Hyannis Park West, that seems to be a spark area right now. If there's a way to, to break out that part, to say, no, you can't.
I will tell you, my neighborhood would be outraged if you broke out Hyannis Park and made them ineligible, because we think we should be ineligible.
Well, that is the slippery slope, Mr. Goodwin.
But I'm saying, on the other...
I hear what you're saying, you're looking at the town meeting.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, but I think, speaking as, speaking as, as one person who's kind of against this whole idea of, of doing this, I think if we keep it at 10,000 square feet or above and allow grandfathering, I think that would be a win-win, where I could hold my nose and vote for this, so.
I think Jim was saying he's fine with saying expansions of nonconforming structures need to meet the current. And how would Hyannis Park feel about that? Because that would be more protections to the abutters. That's the way I view it, is more protections.
We would want those, we would want, my neighborhood would want that protection, too.
The grandfathering.
That's for everything. That's, we're saying now, if we go with the 10,000 plus, you take away grandfathering. That's further squelches the number of lots that would be, you know, eligible.
Right.
Well, it's not like we're taking away grandfathering, we're not letting you to continue to expand upon or promote more of the existing nonconform.
Better said, well said, sir.
We're not taking anything away, we're just saying, no, you can't continue what you already do. You already did it once, we're not letting you do it twice.
A lot of towns do require that you need to meet the current dimensional standards. So it's, it's not unusual, and it's easy to write that in.
Okay. Are we up to four, Kathy?
Highlight this. Number four is, is also already in there, accessory, I'm sorry, Mary has her hand up.
Oh, Mary, I'm sorry.
I, okay, so, just to get back to the definition of a kitchen, right? I think you need to do a little bit more work with that, because we have had sheds with a toilet in it come forward as an accessory dwelling unit with no, nothing in the zoning bylaw and nothing with our affordable housing standards that was going to stop it.
Wait, 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 did she say she had a kitchen with a toilet?
No, a shed with a toilet.
Shed with a toilet.
Just a shed with a toilet, with a table, with, I don't even know what the, the cooking facilities was. It was disgusting. So, I don't know, now thinking about it, gee, every home is built with a, with a kitchen, right? I don't know what makes that happen. But we should, we should bump it up somehow or another so that these accessory dwelling units, you know, have a kitchen. That's one, you know, one nice thing about having it, having these units be affordable and go before the zoning board of appeals. They had to comply with the affordable housing standards for the town, which required X amount of linear feet of counter space, you know, a full kitchen, you know, that kind of stuff. So anyways, I'm sure I'll work with Kathy a little bit more on that.
Like I say, we had some language from 2019 and we can revisit that, Mary.
Mr. Grills.
Yes, Madam Chair, our current zoning bylaw has a definition of a dwelling unit, a single unit providing complete independent living facilities for one or more persons, including permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation. The building code has minimum standards for sizes of rooms for habitation. So you can have a studio apartment, for instance, however, you cannot, you can't sleep in a shed. So this is the first I've heard of the shed with a toilet in it. So I wouldn't consider that a dwelling unit by any stretch.
Thank you.
It just uses the word cooking, Mark, is that what it said? It doesn't use the word kitchen, it just says cooking.
Cooking. I have to digress, but there's no requirement for bathroom facilities to be separate from...
Sanitation.
Permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation.
No requirement for them to be separated.
You mean separate, no.
Like a separate room?
Like a separate room for sanitation?
Nope. Not that I'm aware of. I mean, it could be in the building code, but typically you see them designed like that, so I never even think of it.
Moving into that apartment, by the way.
That would be a downgrade from where you're living now, Jim. Number four, and this is just the, this is in the existing, it just says an accessory apartment may be located within or attached to a principal residential structure or in a detached accessory building on the same lot and shall clearly be subordinate to the principal structure. The next one is the access, number five, the accessory apartment shall be designed so that to the maximum extent practical, the appearance of the property and the building remains that of a single-family residence and is consistent with the design of the principal's single-family dwelling, considering the following, you know, take a look into the architectural details, what's the roof design, the building space and orientation, door and window locations, and building materials. I'm just going to keep going unless someone stops me.
Yeah, yep.
This is just in case people aren't seeing it at home. If the primary entrance to the accessory apartment is not through an existing door or proposed to be shared with the principal dwelling, any new entrance for an accessory apartment must be located on the side or rear of the building, as long as it meets the requirements of existing codes, mainly the building code. Number seven, and this is...
Are we going to interrupt this?
Yes, yeah, we'll interrupt as she goes along, sure.
So, quite honestly, I don't really care where the door is. I mean, if you can put, I'll give you an example. I delivered in a house for many years that had two front doors. Why? Because it was once a bakery converted to a single-family home, and we had two front doors. Actually, kind of looked on it cool, actually, but, so, why do we care where the door is?
I think it's the idea of making it subordinate to the main principal dwelling, which has its main front door.
Right.
I added in there the, through an existing door, because a lot of the ranches have two doors on them already, and it would be easy to use one of those doors, and I didn't want someone to have to put something to the side or the rear, which is how it's written now.
Any new entrance?
I just don't understand why it has to be at the rear or the side. It's just, it's relevant to me.
According to the building code, every dwelling unit, which is what we're talking about, is required to have two separate means of egress. So, as far as how many doors are on the front of the house, really, one has to be subordinate to the other, meaning one is more ornate, one has, you know, maybe a covering over it or whatever, it just can't look like a duplex, I think is what they were going for. They didn't want to look at duplexes, correct?
Because most, I mean, drive-through Captain's Village or anywhere else, everybody's got two doors. You've got a door going in the side, usually into your kitchen, and there's one going into the living front door. So we already have two doors in most cases. So, I don't, again, I'm trying to, I understand we need two, two egresses to the unit, but why do we care where they are, is my point.
Like Mark said, that was a good point, of trying not to make it look like a duplex.
Right. Retaining the residential character of the neighborhood.
You wouldn't do that if, but...
Well, retaining a single-family dwelling, they want it to look like a single-family dwelling, not a duplex. That's the clear language in the bylaw. That's what they want. That's how it was written in the past.
I don't know who "they" is, but I'm trying to...
Who wrote the bylaw in the past?
I mean, drive-through town, everybody's got two front doors. I, I know I do, I know most of the houses in my neighborhood have a porch door or a kitchen door. I'm an appraiser, I go in hundreds of houses. People have two front doors.
Well, they have, they have two doors. One is the main door and the other is an accessory door, or a second, or secondary.
Okay, so there's still doors entering the building from the front. Again, my point is, why do we care where those doors are?
Because we want to retain the single-family dwelling nature of the neighborhood.
But you could actually architecturally make it look worse by not putting a door or something there, in some cases. Have a great big long wall. Why? Because I couldn't put a door there.
I'd like to put this one on, put number six on hold, we'll come back to that. Because part of me agrees with you, Jim. Why do we care where the door is? And actually, a nice front door might be, might be nice. I, I don't know. Let's put that on hold. Just come back to that. All right, Kath, can we do that?
The only comment I would make is the, the model bylaw and what Hefstein's other places is that if the primary entrance of the ADU is not proposed to be shared with that of the principal dwelling, such entrance shall be less visible from the street view of the principal dwelling than the main entrance of the principal dwelling.
Less, less visible?
Yeah, I don't know what that means. I think that's even vaguer. That's why I used what was in the original four, so, but we can keep it, keep that one.
Okay, let, let, okay, we'll look at what others have been done to address this, less visible. Okay.
I guess the big one is, we had had a discussion about the number, I'm sorry, we had a discussion about the number of bedrooms that could be allowed in an accessory apartment. I have the two bedroomed bedrooms listed here, and shall have a maximum habitable floor area that is not larger than 50% of the habitable floor area of the principal's single-family dwelling unit, or, and then highlighted, 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. But then do we want to add, except under no circumstance shall the apartment be less than blank, and I put in 300 square feet. That gives a minimum, minimum size.
It's kind of hard to make an apartment in 300 square feet.
I'm sorry, Mr. Saban, say it again?
It's pretty small. 300 square feet is pretty small.
It's very tiny.
It's, it's small, maybe too small, but it's highlighted for discussion.
I'm okay with setting that as a floor. I mean, don't come to me and tell me you want to build a 10 by 12 studio apartment, 120 square feet. So I'm, I'm good with those, personally.
The 300 and 900? Susan, you have, you would like to keep at the 800?
No, if, I would say 800 if we're going to stick to 10,000. If we're going to consider going up to 15,000, I would consider 900. By way of comparison, the units that were going to be built, or were proposed to be built at the J-MOT site, Kathy, were any of those three-bedroom units, oh, they were all twos, and they were, I think the minimum size was 750 square feet for the entire, so that seemed like a reasonably decent, so two bedrooms is pretty good-sized bedrooms in a 900 square foot house, right? That would be a relatively decent-sized apartment. Could you squeeze three bedrooms into a 900 square foot house and have it look, they would be tiny.
Would they meet the size requirements?
They would be very tiny, correct?
You'd have to take away all the, those bedrooms from your existing dwelling unit, too.
To meet the septic requirement, you're right.
So, I don't know how, I mean, that's...
Okay, that answers my question. So if we, if this, if you want to move forward with 900, then I would ask that back on 3A, we change that to 15,000 square feet, if we're going to have a larger size.
We're going to run the numbers on 15,000, right, Kathy?
Yeah.
So we'll find out how many units, housing dwelling units in Yarmouth are above and below 15,000. We don't have that.
But what does that, what does that tell us?
Yes, of course.
Well, it just tells who it affects, kind of the impact.
Between 10 and 15.
Right now, 80% of the town is, is, is okay. It's, 20% of the town is less...
Okay, meaning what?
Meaning 10,000 or above.
They're, they're, they're...
They're eligible.
They're eligible, yeah, thank you, thank you.
If you change it to 15, we're trying to figure out, well, how many are between 10 and 15 that would become ineligible?
How many then would not be eligible? All right, so why don't we, we're going to get that for the next session, okay. But I'd also like to focus on two-bedroom.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would, if anybody hasn't had the opportunity to go to the IKEA maze, I think that's what I call it, because you get lost in the thing, they have two actual houses that are set up with very small square footages of like 575 square feet. So you can actually see, I'm sorry, so you can actually see what that size square footage, and I was quite honest with, it was a maze that, you know, you get a decent-sized living space into, you know, 5, 6, 700 square feet. So, the size doesn't bother me. I, I think the idea of having two bedrooms allows for the single parent with a child, which we have a lot of here on the Cape. So, I think two bedrooms gives you that opportunity to, so say it's a husband and wife, they have a child, well, now they're going to move out. Well, maybe they don't if they have the second bedroom. So, I'm still okay with two bedrooms.
Yeah, okay. And then a constraint, clearly, which we've heard from during the petitioner's hearings, is the septic. It's always going to be the governor here.
Right, but that's going to be governed no matter what. Health is going to dictate that, correct?
Not necessarily. I mean, it, if you are not within the zone two, like south of 28, you have a situation where people take one or two-bedroom cottages and they build up and they put in a four-bedroom septic because they can. So, there's, the board of health is, as long as it meets Title V currently, the regulations today, they could do it. That this bylaw is actually saying, but we want to go a little bit before that and say, until you're on a sewer system, you have to take one of the bedrooms out of your home and, and basically put it into the accessory dwelling. That way, the number of bedrooms hypothetically on your property stays the same until you get sewer and a sewer allocation for more bedrooms.
Well, the problem with that is that then I will be 10,587 years old before I am eligible, because my property will never be on sewer. So what about those properties that will never, I mean, when you look at the plan, there are parts of the town that won't ever be on sewer. So we've got to be, consider that part of it as well.
I think we could make it as complicated as possible to make sure it's eligible to as many people as possible, or we can make it eligible to a large number of people. Mark and I had discussed maybe saying that this only applies, the one bedroom only applies if you're in the zone two, or, and if you're in an impaired waterway with a TMDL for nitrogen, which is our Parker's River, Lewis Bay, and Bass River. So people who are up and in the Chase Brook watershed wouldn't necessarily be impacted by that. But then it starts making it more and more complicated for Mark to, well, where's this estuary? Where are you located? And, and that type of thing. And then it also starts getting septic stuff involved more heavily in a building, in a zoning bylaw. So you can certainly do that, but it would be, it would be more and more complicated. This allows initially a very simple rule. And that doesn't mean we can't change it later, but it's a simple rule.
But under your scenario, it also would be difficult for us to break out neighborhoods like we just talked about. That's what we have zoning for, VOCD, you can only do this, R40, you can do that. So, either way, we're going to break stuff out.
Not necessarily. You could make all residential zoning districts, this could apply to all residential zoning districts. That's what I thought we would be doing.
Well, that's, that's the way it reads now. That's the way it reads now, yeah. I, I just want to get back to, because I want to try to stay on, on course here a little bit. Not, I'm not trying to jump away from that, Mr. Saban.
No, I'm good.
I just want to lock in on number seven, two bedrooms. Do we have some consensus that two bedrooms are the max? And I see head shakes, pretty much all around, okay. And we've got the 50%, and we're going to come back to see the 900 vis-à-vis what we see for the 15,000 square foot lots, once we get that information. And we all agree on the 300 as the minimum, okay. Moving on to number eight. These things, I think we've already discussed. We've already covered these, some of these. Go ahead, Kathy.
Can I just, can I just, on eight, on the parking, there was also discussion about blacktopping lawns.
Yes, I did remember that.
To meet the parking requirement. It says no parking on lawns. That sounds great, until people blacktop their front lawn so they can meet the parking requirement.
Susan, so you say that, is, I'd like to hear from the building commissioner, is that even allowed?
What?
Yes, technically you can, you can just blacktop your front yard?
Sure.
So it says...
You can.
The tenants, I have their bylaw that they've adopted, it hasn't been approved by the Attorney General's office yet. They, it has a section on parking, 4.11, 4.5. It says it shall all be on-site, it shall be incorporated to blend in with the existing residential parking on-site, shall not encroach on the 10-foot sideline green area required under section 2.3.4.1B. It doesn't reference how big that area is, it does talk about, so it's a different section of the bylaw. ADUs shall not be located in a designated AE or V flood zone.
We don't have a 10-foot side yard, I mean...
Residential, we don't.
Green belt, is that what, I heard you say they have a green belt?
Green zone, I think.
Green, it says 10-foot green sideline, 10-foot sideline green area required under a separate section of the bylaw. Need to have a 10-foot side yard.
Because consider, consider, you could have two right now with your existing, and if you do an ADU, that means you have to have four parking spaces. That's a lot.
And you would have to, they would have to be on the plan that's submitted and reviewed, correct?
Yes, Mr. Grills?
But the plan could include, to meet the four, blacktop that front lawn, so they can pack on the front lawn to meet the four.
You couldn't tandem, you couldn't tandem two and two on an existing driveway, and that would just handle it, and you wouldn't have to blacktop anything.
If you had the driveway wide enough. But some of those driveways, right now, the typical capes got the driveway on the side, and you either stack them, you know, if you get two cars, a few can do side by side, but not a lot. So you do two, back to front, and then if you want to do an ADU, you've got... So you do two, back to front, and then if you want to do an ADU, you've got to find places to do two more.
That's right.
And it's happened in my, it's happened in my neighborhood. You drive down several streets, they blacktop the front lawn. It was so bad in Rainham, I think, that they actually passed a zoning law prohibiting it, because that's what people were doing.
Locks in the nutrients, though. Locks in the nutrients, so
So
I guess I'm getting at it.
Less nitrogen, there's probably a positive there somewhere.
Well, this is
What are you proposing?
I, I don't know, I think maybe if we can come up with, I don't know, language like that, or similar to that, or something. I was going to ask the Conservation Commission if they had some sort of notion about how you would protect some green space in the residential area. But that is, that if we are going to require two more additional parking spaces, we should not be promoting blacktopping front lawns. It would be one thing if you put in crushed stone or something like that, which some people may do, but most people will do blacktop because it's easier to maintain, it's cheaper to install, and it's, it again affects the residential character of a neighborhood, and that's, that's what we're trying to protect.
They could do that right now, if they wanted to.
And do.
And they, well, hopefully they're not parking on a septic system.
Add it to ADUs.
People have circular driveways that go across their whole front lawn as well, so
Yeah.
Take a look and see what we can do, it sounds like you're more concerned about the green space in front of the structure, not from like in front of the garage over, which is what people do, is they always, you see it tons of, they have like a little Y that kind of goes over to the side. And they're parking on the side.
It's the street view that we're trying to, that I'm concerned about.
Okay.
Madam Chair, quick question.
Yes, Mr. Saban?
Do we have a lot of parking complaints in town?
Yes. Yeah, people parking on the lawn, I get lots of those calls every year, all the time.
And that's part of the problem, we can't restrict the number of cars somebody owns, so a single-family homeowner can buy five cars, keep them all registered, and keep and park them in his yard, and so it's
It's, I think it's an issue well beyond just accessory apartments.
It is.
It's usually just associated with short-term rentals more than anything.
Associated with short-term rentals?
Mostly with short-term rentals.
Okay, Kath, moving on.
Number nine, we already agreed that, you know, the apartment's not intended for sale and shall not be held in separate ownership or be placed in a condominium form of ownership. Number ten is just kind of, oops, so sorry. Is just basically saying, you know, we, we need to have some site plans that show where you're going to be putting this parking and any proposed landscaping or anything that you're going to do for your neighbor, and then floor plans for all accessory apartments, but if you're doing an addition, obviously, and it's going to be required by the Building Department anyway, you need architectural plans showing elevations and building materials and that type of thing.
And these all get submitted to the Building Commissioner, correct?
So the Building Commissioner would be responsible for having determined whether the parking spots that are shown on a site plan are accessible, acceptable or not? Lucky you.
Unless, if it's by right.
I do a lot more than that.
If it's, if it's by right. And then this, this kind of number eleven, either the accessory apartment or the principal dwelling unit shall be owner-occupied, and I consider that to be the primary residence on a year-round basis, except for temporary absences. I know that that was a question mark that, that Susan had, and maybe something we can talk about in more detail, but when you're absent during that time, you cannot rent out that, your owner-occupied unit. The owners of the principal structure shall occupy as their primary residence either the principal dwelling unit or the accessory apartment. If the, it allows the owner to occupy the accessory apartment if they'd like, rather than the principal structure, then the principal structure will be designated as the accessory apartment. So depending on your family size, you can pick which one you want to live in. But the question, the question here for everyone is, do we want to allow for temporary absences for like snowbirds? Do we care? So basically, you're saying if you're a second homeowner, in a sense, because you don't live here year-round, you're not registered to vote in the town of Yarmouth, you're not paying state of Massachusetts taxes, is it okay for you to have an accessory apartment, but you can't rent out your unit when you're not there? Or do you have to live there, basically, year-round, except for when you go on vacations or whatever?
It's hard to enforce. That's tough to enforce, that's, I'd hate to go down that road. I just got enough headaches in this town without adding to another layer of it.
Can I just ask a question, Mark, do you have any knowledge about what other towns have done? I think Chapman, I think Chapman is very strict about this, I think, or one of the, one of those chaps I read
Well, Mr. Chapman gave us a whole bunch of ideas about
Was it Bruce, one of the towns I thought was very, very strict about the notion of the snowbirds leaving
Tennis, that said for bona fide temporary absence, who's determining bona fide temporary absence? It gets very, very complicated, I think if you don't want, if you don't want people to be leaving for a long period of time, or even, you know, whatever, then don't allow second homeowners, say, this is your primary residence and you, it's owner-occupied and you live here and this is where you live. That doesn't mean that you're not going to go on vacation to Florida for the month of February, that's going on vacation, that's not living somewhere else. It, it's up to you guys as to how, how you want it.
Your primary residence, yeah.
Mr. Grills.
The term enforcement, we're not driving around looking to knock on people's doors to find out what they're doing is illegal. We get notified by somebody, we respond to that complaint, we do over three hundred of them a year. So enforcement, we actually do enforcement, it's, the locating the violations is what the issue is, and we don't have staff for that, and no, never will. We don't need to go look for problems, they usually come to us. So to enforce the snowbird issue, if there's a tenant in there who's creating havoc in their neighborhood and parking on the lawn and parking on the street and, you know, leaving trash out, that's how we find out about these things. The neighbors complain, we take on, we take on enforcement from that point.
I, I, I'm comfortable with the language of leaving temporary absences to be what we think it might be, open to some level of interpretation. Someone might get really sick and have to go into rehab, or go somewhere for months and months and months. They can't live at home.
I think primary residence covers that.
If it, if the owner, if the owner has the property and that's their primary residence, that's their primary, I'm not going to check, I'm not going to check to see if they're there three hundred and sixty-five days.
The key is primary residence.
Do you determine a primary residence?
If they want to take out reference to temporary absences, because it's just like, we all temporarily leave our homes.
Yeah, that's right.
Mr. Saban asked a question about the definition of a primary residence.
How do you define a primary residence? In today's world, a lot of those people that are snowbirds, because of, well, I won't say why, but
State taxes.
Have made Florida their primary residence and this is their secondary now, inheritance and every other benefit of not living in Massachusetts. But they spend six months here.
By state law, we can't issue building permits to those people because it's not their primary residence.
They've already got the house, they already own the house.
We won't issue them a building permit. They can own it, I'm a homeowner, but I don't list this as where I live, I live in Florida. If you came to me to apply for a building permit to build your garage, I would deny that. You cannot apply for a building permit as a homeowner, because it's not your primary residence.
My second home, and how, again, how do you determine that, by why I registered to vote?
We go to Vision, Vision has your mailing address as Florida, then you're not a, that's not your primary residence.
So it's based on mailing address?
Typically, the mailing address is, has been fairly accurate. I'm sure there's a couple people who flip through the, but not everyone's registered.
I'm just running through some of these potential scenarios of things that potentially could come back and haunt us and say, well, you know, I, you know, I registered to vote in Florida because it's cheaper for me to have that as my place to do business, but I live here seven months a year.
They wouldn't be eligible for, they wouldn't be eligible for
Using that, good, so there's, okay.
It sounds like there's some protection there, okay. Mary, Mary Wigan, you had a question?
Yes, so the town assessor has a policy, like the town has a policy defining a resident, and it has to do with your beach sticker. But it might be something that you might want to dig up and look at, and that might solve this problem.
I never get a beach sticker, I'm still a resident, but okay.
I've lived here my whole life, I've never had a beach sticker.
I think they look at the assessors and see where your mailing address.
Sure. What do you mean, like who is eligible for a beach sticker?
Keep, but somebody's going to ask us these questions sooner or later.
No, it's good conversation.
So in terms of language here, I guess on the, what's, what we're getting tripped up here is the phrase, on a year-round basis, except for temporary absence, shall be owner-occupied.
Right, we can give rid of
Can we just leave it like that?
And we just want to make sure
A primary residence?
Primary residence, just leave that there.
Yep, we can, we can do that, and we just want to make sure that only one unit, I don't know if we have it anywhere else, only one unit can be rented at a time.
Right.
So just, that's the only thing we could add it, if we're taking that out, because it says shall not be rented in any
I think we say that somewhere else, but
Yeah, exactly.
We should say it twice if we have to.
I just can't remember.
Some people will still try to do it.
Sure, sure, sure.
Okay, number twelve, Kath.
All accessory apartments shall be for year-round use. I think that's a good statement, and it applies if you're family-related, or if you're renting it. So even, even with your family-related, we, we don't want, we want, either if you're renting it, you're renting it, if it's family and you're not charging, we want your family member to live there year-round.
And the second sentence, in case you're wondering, very much clears it up.
Right, and, and so if you have a lease, all lease agreements shall be for a minimum of twelve consecutive months with no seasonal or short-term rentals and no subletting of room rentals.
Seems pretty, makes it pretty clear.
Thirteen is talking about eligibility for maximum rental rates, I think we should talk about that a little bit, a little bit later, and I'm sure. Number fourteen is just, we had a lot of discussions about home offices and home occupations. This was to be clear, that no commercial uses shall be allowed within an accessory apartment, except for those meeting the definition of home offices, which is the desk in the corner, and home occupations per Section four one six, which are very, very, very limited uses. So I don't know if you want to discuss, discuss that.
Did I ask about childcare centers? What was the answer?
I don't remember.
Put a childcare center in an ADU.
Mark, can you answer this, Susan?
Healthcare.
I'm sorry, Mark.
Home daycare that requires a special permit from the ZONI Board of Appeals currently, no matter where you are.
You have a farm, too.
They could, could, under the permit, then they could put a childcare center in an ADU.
Don't specifically provide for it, or if we could prohibit it, I guess if you didn't want to have a daycare on your property, you could prohibit it, but that would be between the owner and the tenant, I would say.
You could prohibit it in the accessory dwelling unit, I don't think you can legally necessarily prohibit someone from having it in the primary.
In the primary residence, because it's a state law, isn't it?
Right, right.
Yes, but it still requires a special permit from the ZBA, so parking will be, become a topic.
Yeah, okay.
You know, the neighbors get to speak up with, you know, regarding the traffic and things like that, so it, it comes out in public hearing.
I mean, when we say no commercial uses, and we can clarify that more
That's a commercial use, there's
Ah, daycare's a quali, qualified as an educational use in Massachusetts. And they're allowed everywhere in this, in the town.
Okay, thank you.
Can the ADU have a farm?
Excuse me?
Can the ADU have a farm?
Yes, they could.
They could really claim
More than two acres and they create more than a thousand dollars' worth of income per acre.
There are protected uses.
It's good to be back, I love this, this is fun.
So are, are we, are we looking to carve out this
No.
I'm not.
Particular use?
No, I think because of the protection
The ZBA will take care of it. It feels like the ZBA will
Yeah, it's covered under special permit, it's already covered.
Okay, perfect.
Although, can I just give you a heads up on this fourteen? Except for those meeting the definition of home office, blah, 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 blah. The people that I have spoken to probably will not agree to that, they don't want any commercial
But do you know what, what is
I'm just, I'm just, I'm not agreeing or disagreeing, I'm telling you that is an issue.
Okay.
But we'll make sure that we've, we've got it covered in terms of
Yeah, we have to explain it.
We'll have to explain it and make sure they understand.
Because I think there's a car dealership down by your house, down, a couple doors down, at the corner of Broadway and, was that Mass Ave? Every, every once in a while, when I do a Google something, there's something pops up, there's somebody down there has a license to have a car dealership, and they just do it online. And you know, I don't think there's cars parked down there or anything like that, but
There is a huge always, there's a big, what do you call those things that people live in?
RV?
Like a big RV parked outside all, almost all the time.
All right, I just, but
That has nothing to do with selling cars.
No, but that, people think that's where they're conducting the business out of.
Oh, okay.
Go knock on the door.
There we go. People have a lot of free time on their hands, Susan.
I'm just bringing it up as, you know, the black swan of it.
Slapping my papers down.
I got a question on fifteen.
All right, fifteen.
Kathy, can you read fifteen?
I would be happy to read fifteen.
Thank you, just a week.
I'm sorry, Will, if this is taking so long, but these are issues that are important to people I speak to.
I agree with you, I agree with you, Susan, and we heard them, and now we're moving on.
The creation, this is trying to address the environmental issues, we've kind of talked about it periodically throughout the discussions, but the creation of accessory apartments shall not increase the number of legally allowed existing bedrooms on a lot, unless the lot is served by municipal sewer and has received a sewer allocation for an increase in wastewater, perhaps you could say, or is located outside the zone two, or a waterway impaired by blah-bitty blah. And then that would cover your neighborhood that's not impaired. It gets complicated for Mark, but it's not going to be addressed. The impaired waterways is not addressed by the Health Department. And people who keep saying it's all going to be addressed by the Health Department isn't true, if you're outside of a zone two.
Well, what is true?
If you're in a zone two, right now, and you're not on sewer, you are limited to your grandfather number of bedrooms. There's a lot of three bedrooms, for example, on a twenty-two thousand square foot lot, but if you currently have two bedrooms on your twenty-two thousand square lot, you can only have one bedroom per ten thousand square feet, you're limited to two bedrooms, period. And that's when, all of those situations are typically when someone takes that, this isn't, this is totally separate from what your septic system can handle. Yes, your septic system needs to handle whatever it needs to handle, but most septic systems are all three-bedroom or higher. There's no such thing as a two-bedroom septic system, they're always designed to three bedrooms. So the septic system design is not the criteria, it's what has been your pre-existing number of bedrooms that you've been allowed. So that applies to zone twos, and that's Title V for protecting our drinking water. But if you're outside of that, like the example I had for that cottage that went from a one- or two-bedroom cottage to a four-bedroom, they were able to fit in a, it's a Title V system with no variances, they got approved by the Health Department, and so they increased, they doubled their bedrooms. There's nothing that would prevent that from happening. Doesn't prevent it from happening now, if you want to increase the size of your house. But do we want to be promoting that as part of the ADUs?
Well, the other part of it is, do we want to prevent that, not necessarily promoting it, are we, I mean, if you, if you can do it now, I'm okay with a trade-off, so you're not creating an additional bedroom in those zones, but if you have an acre of land and can add an additional, so I'll use myself as an example. I have a three-bedroom septic system, but I could certainly make a fourth bedroom, but I can't because, without upgrading my septic system. Because my lot is so large, I could then indeed do that. Are you saying that just because I can do that, I
I'm sorry, say that again?
So, got a two-acre lot, have an existing three-bedroom septic system, but my acreage allows me to have a four-bedroom septic. Under this scenario, can I increase my septic to a four-bedroom and then get that because of the size of my lot? But at ten thousand, I wouldn't be able to do that, is that how I'm understanding this?
Thousand square feet, I mean, that's
That's ten thousand per bedroom, right?
Technically, in that scenario, you could say I'm adding another bedroom to my home and get the four-bedroom, not having an ADU. And then convert that fourth bedroom to, to an ADU later, because you're not increasing the number of bedrooms for the ADU.
Again, I apologize, because I just know there are people sitting out there trying to figure out how they can do this and the ways that they can do it, and ways they can get around it, so I'm going to ask questions that
I'm not saying this is the, the end-all and be-all, I'm just trying to answer the question when people say, how, why are we adding more housing and more bedrooms to our impaired wa, our waters? And this is saying, well, we're not, you, you are going to add more flushes. If you have more people in the town of Yarmouth, you're going to add more flushes, and we will be increasing nitrogen. But this is just kind of saying it's equal, tit-for-tat, you get the same number of bedrooms however you want to carve it out on your property. Part of it is to help facilitate approval and answer those questions with regard to the environment. I do believe the petitioners were stating, making the statement that this was the case all along, but technically, that really only applies to the zone two, which is the center of our town.
So there'll be no increasing in bedrooms, that's what you're saying? Regardless of, you can, if you have four, you can keep four regardless of how you, you carve it up the way you want, two and two, three and one, but four is the max.
Enforcement becomes somewhat difficult, as Mark's example was, you know, we're getting the contract that said as soon as you get certificate of occupancy, come back in and put that door back in. So it, it Not going to stop people from doing things they shouldn't do.
But I, I think that that, number fifteen runs, I'm going back to purpose and intent. And in that, we say, increasing the number of smaller dwelling units available in Yarmouth for year for year-round rental. We're saying that that's one of the things, that's one of our objectives here, is to increase the number of units. By this statement 15, it runs counter to that. It would say, the number of bedrooms you have now are it, right? So we're not increasing any bed, we're not increasing...
I disagree slightly, Madam Chair, I thought the, the idea with this is to throw up a wall, a kitchen, a bath, and allow some other family unit, I'm using the root family wrong, another dwelling unit to be created. That's what I thought the whole, so the Brad Goodwins can find a place to rent from the Savins, and the Savins get some money and they, we still have this, and on the other hand, town of Yarmouth protects the number of bedrooms it has by keeping the number capped. That's what I thought we were going at, the idea of throwing up a wall.
Actually, they're not in conflict, because they, we were actually, are increasing the smaller, the number, but it must be within the context of what your sewer system can handle now. You're not going to increase anything in your sewer system. So we, we could increase the number as long as the number of bedrooms, the availability, how you carve up that number is up to you. Technically, you're right, we're not actually increasing the number of...
But if you're preventing somebody who's got a two-bedroom to create that third unit because they, they have already a three-bedroom septic system, then yes, you're preventing the creation of additional units.
Because the septic system...
Because he's got a two-bedroom, you know, the, the two-bedroom ranch in, I'll use Captain's Village with a one-car or two-car attached garage, so they say, I've got a three-bedroom septic system, I want to turn my garage into an accessory unit, so they're adding a bedroom.
Right.
But under what you're saying is they, it's like-for-like, so they have to give up a bedroom to get a bedroom. That doesn't make sense to...
Or upgrade the septic system, I think one of them...
Septic system's already upgraded, it's a three-bedroom septic system.
He's already allowed three?
So pre-existing, when he, in 1972, when they built the house, they built a two-bedroom ranch with a two-car garage, because they both wanted a place to park their car, and they built a three-bedroom septic system, because that's what they did.
So they have a three-septic, three-bedroom septic in the ground right now.
Now they say, hey, you know, we're aging in price, we want to turn that two-bed, two-car garage into an, an accessory apartment.
Right.
We can have a max of two bedrooms, but because they've only got a three-bedroom septic, would they be allowed to create a one-bedroom unit? So the answer to that is no, they can't add a bedroom.
Not if they're in a zone two, they're, they wouldn't be allowed to, so you can't, as Kathy said, you can't build a two-bedroom septic.
Right.
The smallest septic you can build by Title V is a three-bedroom.
Right, that's what...
So a lot of the ranches that you're talking about, there's already, they already have two bedrooms, and they, we've had numerous people come in and apply for a building permit to, to add a third bedroom, and they can't do that, because it's turned down by the health department.
And the main trigger there is zone two?
Yes.
Yes. But...
So we need to make sure we clearly define somehow zone two.
Well, it's clearly defined, there's a map of it.
Okay, yeah, because, you know, people are going to come in, well, now, well, I'm in zone two, or am I in a zone two? So there might be a way we can...
I guess I would, I mean, that's the case where that is governed by the health department, and if you just want to limit the number of bedrooms to the zone two, you don't have to say anything, you just, your next item says you have to meet all the, the local fire, health, and sanitary codes, so you wouldn't need to say anything. This is extending it beyond the zone two. And maybe you don't want to do that, but then you guys have to be able to answer the question of, how many more bedrooms are we adding and how, to, to the community?
Yep.
But that's part of the purpose of the, is to create...
Which gets back to Madam Chair's, well, Jim's...
I think it's not just to create, I'm sorry, Mark, not just to create more bedrooms, it's to utilize better our existing housing stock. We are severely, many places, overhoused. The average number in even our two- or three-bedroom ranches that we have is 2.3 people. That means there's a lot of places there that are, that...
Underutilized.
You have a three-bedroom home with two people in it, they could easily carve off something.
Yeah, one.
Yeah, that's where I got it.
I would argue that, that it is both of those items.
I, I think we...
Again, the big pie, you've got to increase units and, and increase availability.
But I think the way it's always been listed is we want to use our existing housing stock more efficiently.
And let's change that first sentence to, instead of increasing, as Joanne explained, the number, the phrase you just used, by utilizing or better utilization of dwelling units that are available in Yarmouth year-round, better utilization as opposed to increasing the number. Does that make sense?
Well, see, I'm increasing the number of units that would be available, you would just have two smaller units versus one big unit.
Say that again, Kathy, what was the phrase?
Better utilization of existing bedrooms.
Existing...
All's I'm saying is, is you are increasing the number of units, because you now have two units, they're just smaller than the one bigger unit.
Correct.
So you are creating more smaller dwelling units available for year-round rental.
But do you want to describe that as better utilization, or do you want to describe that as increasing units?
I think it, I think it, I think maybe that's another thing that says better, I mean, they had something, I think, in the model bylaw about better or efficient use of existing housing stock or something like that, which is kind of what, is also what we're doing. We want to utilize what we have versus creating, you know, a...
So let's combine the two concepts.
Yeah, I can look into adding something on that.
Which will result in an increased number of dwelling units or something like that?
I, I think this, you know, I personally think this is going to run into trouble with the proponents of the petitioners and others, where essentially we're saying, whatever number of bedrooms you have now, that's it. That's it.
But that's what they said in the public hearing. Ryan Castle very clearly said, we're not increasing any nitrogen loading because we're not changing the number of bedrooms.
Right.
I think what he was saying was that whatever the capacity of your, of your septic is...
Not bedrooms.
Would not, I don't, I would, I would, it was, it was all about the capacity of your septic.
Yes.
You may have a two-bedroom house and a three-bedroom septic.
Right.
So you could add one bedroom, because your septic can accommodate it. I think that's what...
I believe you're correct.
We're saying. I believe that's what they were saying.
So under the scenario of the two bedrooms with the three-bedroom septic, and you're not in a zone two, you should be allowed to do that.
You should...
And what we're saying is, it doesn't matter, you can't do it.
Yeah, that's what that sentence says.
That's what that sentence says.
That's what that sentence says.
And if you don't, if you want to, don't want to do that...
Don't.
Yeah.
Then you take out 15 altogether and let the health regulations govern, and then you guys got to explain at, at town meeting that we're not really causing more detrimental impact to the environment.
I have no problem explaining.
I think it would be K.
Mr. Grills would like to say something.
Mr. Grills.
To get back to Jim Saban's earlier comments about having two acres of land and wanting to expand his septic capacity to accommodate additional bedrooms, if I had a two-acre parcel and I wanted to add two bedrooms to add an apartment to the back of my parcel, I'd want to be able to add leaching capacity or another septic system on my property in order to accommodate that. If I had a three-bedroom house under my two acres of land and I had to carve off one bedroom and add it to an accessory dwelling unit, there, there might be a lot of pushback for that. Not that we have a lot of two-acre parcels, but we definitely have enough parcels out there where people have the land capacity to increase the size of their septic system. So something to consider.
I, I think that's going to, I think we're going to experience, my sense is, again, listening to the public hearing comments, we would, pushback is the, is the, is a good way to put it, Mark. And the other piece of this, and I know we want to be sensitive to the environment, that's part of our, it's an important element in this, is the number of units and applications are not large, even in the town of Yarmouth. There, we have the list that was, a draft list that the Housing Assistance Corporation put together for us. It's not a big number, it's four in Sandwich, it's one in Brewster, it's eight in Falmouth, yes, Barnstable, largest town on the Cape, at 24, Mashpee Five, Brewster, it's not, it's not big numbers. It's not going to really, it's not going to make a big difference in the quality, I think, of, but it's, I understand it's the intent, I, I...
Zone two's a big part of the town, and that's going to, that's going to control water just by itself.
And that's, they're locked in, they, that's, they're locked in, we can't help them.
Right.
Am I right, Kathy? We cannot help them.
Right.
They're done.
Yeah.
They're done.
I agree.
Do we want to get rid of 15?
And it'd be interesting to know how many of the lots, how many lots are in zone two?
Residential lots.
Yeah.
Um, am I be able to get Bruce Baer? I think you'd have to do that versus assessing.
Yeah, that'd be great, that'd be great.
Kathy, did you just say we're going to eliminate 15?
It sounds like that's what we're talking about. Yeah.
I'm, I'm in favor.
Because zone two already does that.
So you don't want an affirmative statement about this?
I don't.
Do you think that will cause any confusion from future applicants? Meaning if we don't give them a little bit of a, of a roadmap, most people don't think about whether they live in zone two or not. I'm not saying that that's good or bad.
Look at that.
Okay.
All week out.
Well, it's also, yeah, it's Captain's Villages, but there's also not a lot of stuff going on here, so all of this, this area down here is not subject to it. And as long as your groundwater isn't too high, or even if it is, you can, and you can get a mounted system in, the perk rates are like that, so, you know...
But the other part of that, I mean...
Larger systems can be put onto small lots because of the soils that we have.
And a large portion of that area is under that 10,000 square foot threshold that we've discussed, that whole area that you, that's all 10, less than 10,000 in most of it.
I do not believe that's true. I don't believe this is all, I mean...
Are those all 5,000 square foot lots on, five, 10,000 square foot off sea, ocean and all that?
No, no.
You don't think so?
I don't think the majority of that is less than 10,000 square feet.
It's probably 10 and 10 to 15.
Yeah.
They're not big lots, though, Jim. About the size of my lot, 10, 10 to 15 would be about, there's a few bigger ones.
That's R25, right?
Down here's R25, yes. The rest is really R40, well, north of Buck Island, right?
Okay.
Okay, so, scratchy, scratchy, what am I doing?
Yeah, I, I think the consensus is to leave it out. For now, it's always an option to bring it back in, but for now, let's leave it out. 16.
That's just the general thing, you need to meet all the other requirements, just to give people a heads up in that you need to get a certificate of occupancy for all accessory apartments, even the family-related, all of them. And then number 17 is just saying, if you, you know, if you have a lawfully developed accessory apartment, you know, that right transfers with the sale of the property, just like if you have a duplex and you're selling the whole thing, you're selling those rights along with it. So the next thing is, is talking about when a special permit or something could be issued by right. It's easier to say special permit from the zoning board of appeals except for the following, and it's just three instances that I had identified here, and this is all for discussion, and you guys can add, subtract, and whatever. But if you have a fully conforming lot and structure at the end of building your accessory apartment, and you're meeting all your dimensional and height requirements, have at it. Those are those larger lots of 40,000 square foot or 25,000 square foot, you're meeting zoning, it would be something that, as written, would be allowed to be issued by a permit from, from Mark, obviously, and meeting all the health department and all these other requirements. If you...
Are we good on that one?
Yeah.
The next one is basically saying, if you have an existing principal dwelling, whether it's conforming or non-conforming, and you want to put your accessory apartment inside of that, and you're keeping your dwelling unit the same size and the same height, except for maybe you might need to meet building code by having another means of egress, like if you have a basement apartment, you need to have that secondary egress, so you could increase it for that. And then it included a construction on a minimum lot size of 20,000 square foot, I don't know if that's the right size, and whether you want to limit it to a one studio or a one-bedroom. So that's up for dis, discussion.
Discussion. 20,000 square feet, let's start there.
I, again, I think I'm still trying to wrap my head around the whole dimensional 10 or 20 issue. I think maybe 15 might be the common ground for all of it.
I think if Chris Vincent were here, I can hear him saying, because I heard him say it before, if it's within your house and nothing physically has changed, nothing has changed, we, we should, in my opinion, we should not care what size the lot is, we should not care what, what color you paint the house, we shouldn't care.
Or in the case of the, there are bodies that do care.
They do care, yeah.
I'm just saying, but, but let the bodies that care, care, and let the bodies that don't need to care not care.
Yeah.
Sorry to, sorry to jump in there.
Mr. Vincent's logic on that.
God, he's good. I thought he said that. I'll attribute it to him. Yes, Susan, Ms. Britta.
We'll tell you, this is another follow, and you'll bear with me, because I know you're sick of hearing about it.
I'm in, I'm all in, Susan.
This issue is probably the most important issue, at least to the groups along Lewis Bay. This is by permit only, nothing by right. Now, we, I had a follow-up conversation after I spoke to Kathy to see if we could come up with some modification, would, would the, would the, by permit, people agree to something with some qualifications?
Some give.
So this, this may be, this may be enough, but right now, it is based on our town, our density, our profile, permit only, and wrapping around the concept of trying to enforce it. I think there's language already in the public record that said it would be very difficult to enforce if it's not done by permit. It'd be tough enough by permit, it'll be almost impossible without a permit. So this is, you know, I think a pitchfork issue with a lot of people. Permit only...
Did you say your people?
I didn't say my people, I said by people.
She said some people, some people.
That I am talking to.
You're saying without a special permit, because they'd always get a permit.
A special, well, some, yes, special permit, that, in other words, if you're going to do one, you have to get a special permit.
Regardless.
Not regardless, that's where they stand right now.
They're starting over here, everything requires a special permit, everything.
Right. I don't agree.
On ADUs, oh, no, just on ADUs, just on ADUs.
I still don't agree respectfully.
The board generally is not over there.
Yeah.
I would like to think that the board is not over there.
But it is good to hear that there is that perspective.
They, they are using, quite frankly, the demographics of the town, they're using public comment.
Okay.
They're using the whole notion of enforcement, and it's all working in their behalf. So I just want to raise it, it's out there, a lot of people think if we're going to do this, it should be by permit only, and then we can fashion our law however we want.
Special permit only.
But what are, I, I guess where I want to be is at a point where we can reach some accommodation to something we're comfortable with, knowing that we're not going to satisfy everybody. So on this, again, I want to just focus in on the 20,000. I think there should be no minimum square foot lot if it's inside your house.
Seems reasonable to me.
Everybody, okay? We'll start there. Almost everybody?
So we're striking.
Almost everybody.
Almost everybody.
Almost everybody, all right. We'll take the almost.
We're still in number two, right? We're still in number two, okay.
Studio or one bedroom. I would agree with that.
Why? We're already allowing two, so why are we now going to?
Because this one doesn't require you to go to the zoning board of appeals.
So this is, okay, so if you're only doing one, so if you're doing one unit.
By right, you want to have a studio, one bedroom?
But you want to do two, now come talk to us.
Go see Mark.
So if you want to do two, now you got to come talk to us.
You should come and talk to us.
Okay, got it.
Because it will have more people, more cars, more effects.
Impact.
More stuff.
So by right, you can do one?
You can do one, or a studio.
Or a studio, okay. I'm still good.
Okay. So are we all good on that? Number two, Kathy, I think we are.
Just, just for those who. I just, for the public record, just so I got this right, because I think we're all in agreement, except Ms. Britta. If I'm looking at Google Earth and I see a structure, and then three months later, it's been subdivided somehow, so they have a studio in there, and I can't tell, that's fine. I agree. Got it, just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number three, I think gets back to what you were writing earlier about expansion, right? Is this circling back to the expansion issue?
Because we don't say in, in the minimum standards that you have to meet the current setback requirements. So this is just saying if you do want to expand, so I was assuming that you were continuing with your grandfathering. But one thing that might be allowed by right is an expansion of existing structure or new detached structure where the expansion, new construction is in full compliance with the current height requirements and the dimensional requirements. And here it says, and constructed on a minimum 25,000 square foot, because this would look different from that aerial view that you were talking about, Brad, and is limited to a studio or a one bedroom. So this would allow for some form of an expansion, but then putting, by right, but allowing, but putting some restrictions on it, meeting current setbacks, 25,000 square foot lot, studio or one bedroom.
So you went with R 25, basically?
Basically.
Yeah, okay.
So here we have the 25,000 square foot question.
It's a pretty big lot.
This is for an expansion.
Right, I'm okay with that.
Can I see that chart again with the number of? Mind if we just leave right here?
Yep.
Why don't we, should I do 25,002 when I guess?
No, I'm just looking at the, I'm, I'm just trying to get to the, and what does that, what is, what are, what could possibly be the largest number of permits that could possibly come resulting from that? I can't see it being more than one or two.
Yeah, there's only 10% of the lots are greater than 20,000 square feet.
Right, and we're talking about 25,000, so that could be even less.
I'm reading this table, only 10% of the lots.
No, you need to add them both up.
I need to add one, I missed one, Kathy?
No, you're right, I stand corrected, you're right, Juan.
And 10% equals what raw number?
1,400.
1,400 plus 300 plus, 2,500, 200, out of 13,000 parcels, 2,500.
That's a lot.
Are greater than 20,000 square feet.
It's not a lot.
That's a lot.
Yeah, but this is in R 25, it's not a lot.
It's a lot in that term.
It is not a lot, it is literally not a lot.
Technically, it is a lot, but not a, a lot.
Okay, that was what we needed.
We're getting tired.
There is the break we needed.
I can check with assessors for 15,020, 25,030.
Let's do that.
That would be helpful, especially as it related to the earlier.
It would be helpful.
And with the earlier discussion we had about 10 or 15, which Susan brought up.
So, let's, let's hold on number three until we get those charts. Affordability.
I didn't think we were doing affordability.
Well, this is two questions. There's, there's, we're not doing affordability with a capital A. The planning board, I don't think, wanted to have any type of rental limitations, but when Joanne and I met with, with the community housing committee, there were some discussions and some considerations of having some type of rental, income eligibility requirements and rental limitations. And that's, sorry, I can. I don't know where that one is.
So Kathy's going to pull up this chart, which shows.
Oops, so sorry.
This is what we discussed with the community housing committee.
Mary Wagon, who's here, had developed this chart, and she was just.
My other hat.
Yeah, and she was just like.
Oh, yeah, you were there, Brad, I'm sorry.
Of course. The top portion there is kind of identifying what would be the income eligibility for one, two, one through six size, household size, whether you were meeting 70% of the area median income, 80%, 100% or 120%. So, you know, a two-family meeting 120, they could earn up to $104,400. 100, 100% would be $87,000. And then she also looked at a bunch of different ways of calculating rate, whether it's a federal fair market rental rates, or whether it was based on a percentage of, like our affordables are based on 70% annual mean income. And then she also, for reference, kind of gave you an idea, well, what would be the rental income for 80% annual mean, 100% or 120%? These rental rates down here, just to be sure everyone understands, includes utilities, whereas some other rental rates that you're looking at may not include, include utilities, including the, the federal fair market rate value. So I think one of the things that was discussed at the community housing committee was, you know, eligibility might be based on 120% of area median income, but the rental rates might be based, you know, so up here, so you're really hitting, you know, some of the workforce people who are having some, having some difficulty finding housing as well, but then charge the rates at the 100 area median income. And I know that Mary is showing herself, so she might have more to add on that.
Mary, did you want to say any more?
Nope, Kathy got it perfect, thank you.
She trained me well.
So let's open the discussion on affordability. Do we, do we want, do we want to be in, let me ask a broad question, do we want to be in that game? Of determining rents? That's essentially what this is. Mr. Saban?
If this is in this, if this is part of this, then we're not addressing accessory apartments. We're now making this an affordability issue. And I am of firm belief that this bylaw will be dead on arrival if we put any affordability issues on it. As part of the biggest complaint of the original 2009 was, you're going to restrict my ability to make an income even though I'm willing to invest. So when you're restricting my ability to invest, it restricts my decision-making to do that. If you're going to tell me I can only make so many dollars, then I may not do it. So that was a big no at town meeting is the affordability issue. I think what we might want to try to do, because I understand the concerns of Ms. Wagon and others about affordability, is find a way to allow those, it's kind of like, you know, in your taxes. If you want to pay more taxes, there's a line on the tax form that says, hey, if you're crazy enough to give the government more money to blow, then go ahead and do it. Well, if you want to do this, maybe we find a mechanism within this that says, if you want to create an affordability unit, then you could do it under, maybe there are different criteria to do that, but I don't want to restrict somebody's ability to create a unit because we're restricting their income. But if you want to do it, if you're one of those, you know, philanthropists and say, hey, you know, I'm, I'm willing to rent mine for less money, and I've agreed to sign off on this for a deed restriction of some sort to be able to get, in that one bedroom, two bedroom scenario, that we can only allow one? Well, if I do two, while making an affordable unit, we need to have that mechanism to give people the opportunity to create an affordable unit if they so desire. But I don't want to restrict somebody in the beginning.
So I have a question for you, Kathy. We currently have provisions in the existing accessory apartment by law for, that defines all of these things with regard to affordable, affordability with a capital A.
It's a capital A, so that requires the, you know, the deed restriction at the Barnstable Registry of Deeds, you have to do the fair marketing in order to, you know, have the, you can't choose who, who would actually, who you would rent to. And I think, you know, being a landlord's hard enough, but not necessarily knowing the person might make it a little bit more difficult. So I think we all kind of understand that the capital A wasn't working, but is there the desire to keep some level of affordability on these units is the question at hand.
And again, I go back to, is there a way that we can create a mechanism to give you that option to be able to, if you want to create an accessory unit that's under deed restrictions of affordability?
But nobody's doing it now.
Nobody's doing it, we have it now.
Well, I, I agree, nobody's doing it now, so.
Ms. Britta?
Also, I think during, I think the time that Castle participated on the Zoom, I think he repeatedly said, we are not creating an affordable housing program. So I think Jim's right in that regard. On the other hand, when you look at, when we originally created our bylaw back in, what, the 80s, there was a sort of a social context. We focused on elderly, you know, housing, you know, aging in place, and trying to provide some relief for people that really needed some rental relief. That was sort of the scenario back in the 70s and 80s. That real estate scenario has changed considerably to now. Now it is, it's, you know, it's, this is now viewed as a potential to make money, not necessarily a social contract to help people. And I do think there are some people that would be supportive of an ADU program if we did have some social aspect to it, either the seniors or affordable, or maybe just seniors or something, because it could prompt people to do it if they thought that they were, you know, engaging in a societal goal.
I think a lot of people would do it just for the, for this. I, I can only speak from the circle of people that I know, and we've had these discussions at great lengths about how we can address the housing issue. And the philanthropy of people in this community is higher than maybe we're giving them credit, because there are a lot of people who would like to do such a thing. Not for making an income, they don't need the money, but they can help address a, a community problem.
How do we put that, is Joanne always says, this is going to the legislature for someone to take a look at. How do we put that concept into language that doesn't look like we're creating an affordable housing program? Because I agree with you, if people think we're doing this ADU program to create affordable housing, it's not going to, it will be, it won't be supported. People are not going to double density and do all.
So my recommendation is remove 407.5.
Mr. Grills?
Perhaps the way to address it is to incentivize the creation of affordable units through leniency of other sections of the zoning bylaw, which is technically what 40B is. It gives you a little bit of leniency from your, from your zoning bylaws, and then encourages people to create affordable housing. So if you wanted to have an affordable requirement in your bylaw, perhaps find a way to give a little bit of leniency to encourage people to want to do it. Just a thought.
Anyone else?
Yes, Madam Chair, I was just looking, because I knew I had read it earlier, in Eastham, what they say, there are no tenant restrictions or qualifications. However, if an ADU is subsidized with state, federal, local funding, I'd like to hear more about what that is, then the renter needs to meet current income, current income qualification guidelines. So that's interesting.
Is that like a section eight?
Again, this is a summary of a, of a bigger bylaw.
Right.
But perhaps we could.
The notion is there.
Right, without going as far as this, it does give a little bit of wiggle room for people that do, you know, choose to finance it through different means in order to create their accessory dwelling unit?
I think what Mark's saying is, people could do that right now. You could create an accessory apartment and then rent it at an affordable rate. Right, I mean, you can, you can do that now. I think he was saying is like, how would you incentivize or give some bonuses or some other additional relief in order to encourage that from happening? I think that would be really complicated to try and add that in at this particular juncture.
Just, just to cut this, just to, what does Doris always say, I like to call the question, is that what, I'm going to miss her at this town meeting. Why don't we do this? I think tax, tax incentives are the best thing to do, we don't control that part of the area. Why don't we just move on, take the affordability out of this now? Keep an open mind, and maybe we can talk to FinCom and see if there's some kind of tax leniency we can do if somebody wants to do an ADU for affordability.
And just as a contrast, if I may, and then I promise we can call the question, Brad. In Wellfleet, occupiers of ADUs must be income eligible. So I'm just saying that there are different ways of approaching this.
And then we're in the same way, and then they set it based at the federal fair market rates.
Provincetown has a sewer.
Right, but the federal fair market rates are very, very, very low. Very low.
I was just giving a little broader perspective on, you know, towns that have already trod this ground. Doesn't mean that those towns are the same as our town, but it is worthy context.
We're the best.
So I, I will take Mr. Goodwin's suggestion, and we'll put this to the side for now and look to see if we can do some more research on how we might incentivize this. But for now, I'd like to move in the direction of the current, the current bylaw has, you know, paragraph after paragraph on affordability. This now will have nothing on affordability, and I'm completely in favor of that, just in terms of a private homeowner becoming the Yarmouth Rent Control Board. There are all sorts of issues, we have issues with enforcement already. And this would just add a layer where we're shifting some, some maybe responsibility, social responsibility, to a homeowner on federal, federal guidelines, median, median income. I mean, the definitions go on and on. I just, I think if we're silent on it, I've said this before, defining who the tenant is, I think is something we should not be in the business of.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Saban.
I agree with you completely. However, something just came into my head after Mr. Rubenstein read the Eastham bylaw. So what happens in our future that housing, you know, I'm thinking of the Cavalier, where the town gave funds to create those units? So what happens in the future if the town then decides, hey, we're going to give you funds to create that accessory dwelling unit? I think that's what that Eastham bylaw is saying, is if, if the town starts helping you build it, then you've got to go.
Yeah, there's public money in it.
Right.
If you're, if you're part of the health program.
So maybe we want to put that statement in there, that if you get money from the state, federal, or the town to build your ADU, then you've got to follow those accessory, the affordability issues. Otherwise, you know, you're using your own dollar, you do what you want.
I don't think that's zoning. I guess my point would be, I think that that's a separate program that's run outside of zoning.
Get Mary Wagon on your butt, so.
I ask Mark a question. Mark, in the past, did we have, when, in the original law that is doing, has paragraph after paragraph addressing an affordable component of our prior program? Was that an issue? Did that, do we have problems with that, enforcing it, or paperwork, or any problems? Okay.
No, I've had inquiries about them. We currently run a, a running tally of the accessory dwelling units in town anyway, because we're required by the current standard to inspect them every two years. So that's basically what we're doing.
So if we get back, at least we've got experience doing it.
Okay, moving on. 407, records and inspections.
As we, as we got further along in the draft, it got rougher and rougher, just to be clear.
You mean you're human? Oh, okay, all right.
But I think this is, starts looking at, you know, records and documentation, and I think most of the communities seem to be going to a notarized affidavit. It's not ideal. If, if you are renting it, this could probably be something that gets incorporated into the annual rental certificate that's required, and we'd have to add another box that says, you know, an accessory dwelling unit in addition to all the other boxes we keep adding to the health department's rental form. And then maybe, and you know, and then maybe at that point it requires that, that affidavit, and we could come up, you know, with the wording for it, so that people would have a form that they would identify and sign as part of that. But the family related, if you're not renting it and you're not charging anybody money, that doesn't get inspected by the health department or monitored or permitted through the health department. What's happening now is that it's being done through the, the building department. It inspects them every two years. So it gets down, so, so one of them is, how, how do we make sure that it's, who do we identify, whether you're being in the primary dwelling unit or the accessory? Who's, who's the homeowner living in? We want to know that. We want to know and get confirmation that you're renting it out for 12, 12 consecutive months. And I don't know whether you want to include a copy of the lease for that. A lot of places did say include the copy of the lease. And then, but for the family related, it would just be, again, which one are you staying in? And I, and I clearly stating that you're not renting it because it's going to a family member, and who the family member is. I think we also need to include that definition, the expanded definition of a family member, which right now is just owners of blood, marriage, or law. But I think in 2019, we also included, or other long-term family-like relationship that is caregiving or parental in nature. So if you wanted to have, to include, I want a caregiver, I'm going to give them free rent, and then they come and they, they take care of the house and they check on, on me twice a day or something along those lines, you, you could do that. But I, I think down under inspections, I referenced the, the inspection that's required by the health department, but I think we should probably add back in, I had taken it out. Unfortunately, adds work to the building department, but that bi-annual inspections by the building commissioners. Or do you want to say, this is another dwelling unit, we don't inspect non-rental dwelling units, and we don't want to have anything to do with it? It's harder to keep track of, I think, if we don't do it.
Discuss.
Mark, you want more inspections or less?
I don't know that I ever have a choice in the matter.
You really don't, but I just.
Two years, I mean.
So if I'm understanding you, Kathy, there's a paragraph here that hasn't been written yet with regard to the role that the building department would play?
Not in the one that you have, but I've added, I'm sorry, you don't have it right, quite up there. I'm just thinking, maybe we add this back in. So not only all accessories to be rented shall be registered with the health department, but also accessory apartments which are not rented and are used by a family member, shall be inspected at least once every two years by the building commissioner or his, you know, obviously his designated, for which there shall be an additional user fee, which is, that's all in there now, and the amount stipulated by the board is second, selectmen payable at the date of inspection. That's all in there now. I just added, which are not rented and are used by a family member, just to make the distinction. If it's already being rented, it's being done by the health department, let them keep doing their business. But if it's family related, you know, do we want to keep an eye on that? Maybe not. But how do you know when it goes from family related to rental? And, because they'll start renting it out, they won't get a rental certificate from the, the health department. It's, it will happen. At least this way, every two years, they, they catch stuff. That's what happens now.
Well, I think that's, I think that's important. We've got, we've received the, the concerns of the community saying, who's checking?
Right.
Well, but it's also about capacity, which is why I think Mr. Saban brought up the initial question.
It also triggers the, right now, we're doing the family related. When the family member moves on or passes on, or whatever the case may be, and they start renting out that unit, then we can transfer the response.
and they start renting out that unit, then we can transfer the responsibility of permitting over to the Health Department.
Okay. All right.
We're not gonna have a section here on enforcement?
Yeah, we're gonna, the red line version that's up on the, we will.
Oops, I'm sorry.
So underneath the highlighted section, Susan, the underline where it says accessory apartments which are not rented and are used by, that's gonna be added in.
That's not on the ones we have.
Apparently in our hands.
Enforcement is...
That's not enforcement, though.
Right. What's failure to pass inspection or submit annual affidavits shall allow the Building Commissioner to require removal.
What if they don't do that? What if they don't sign the notarized copy? He doesn't get anything. They don't do any of that. What recourse does Mark have at that point?
It's already in the zoning bylaw.
Actually, while we're sitting here, I'm writing my little notes. So the documentation, we'll actually draft a letter, and they're gonna certify that they comply with these sections, fill in your name, fill in your address, and have it notarized to us, so we'll have a running list.
See when they come forward and tell you they're doing it.
Excuse me?
Oh, I see, when they get the permit, I get it. Okay. That's when you give it to them. Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Saban.
If we can go back to documentation, wouldn't a utility bill or something like, I mean, why do we have to have a notarized? I know often you have to just go to beach stickers, for example. You gotta show your, either your driver's license and a utility bill that shows that you're the occupant of that home.
Because the landlords, a lot of times, will pay the utility bill. They don't want to pay to put a separate service on the building.
Separate service, okay.
They'll just run it through their house and add it, you know, add an additional panel to provide the service. So there's not necessarily gonna be a utility bill.
So the accessory unit wouldn't necessarily have one, but the primary would?
Correct.
So the notarized affidavit would come from the property owner that says that I am renting my unit as an accessory unit, and we will provide them with a copy of the lease. So in the yellow line here, we have copy of lease agreements with affordable rental rates being charged also to be submitted. I'm fine with providing a copy of the lease.
That was, that's highlighted in yellow because it all relates to all those affordability questions.
Right, but I still think that we provide a copy of the lease part is what I want to keep somehow. Show us your lease. We don't care how much you're renting it for, but we want it so that you have a 12-month lease.
Anything else on inspections, Kathy? And then the final big highlight?
Yeah. At some point, we need to deal with the fact that there's a bunch of the family-related accessory apartments out there. They may have gotten all kinds of relief, they may not meet our minimum standards anymore, but if that family member leaves, they might be interested in converting it to a rental unit and just providing a mechanism for them to do so through a special permit. They'd have to go back for a special permit to convert it from a family-related to a regular accessory dwelling unit. I have asked Mary about how many of the affordable accessory apartments are out there, and she's gonna do a little bit more research on that, that actually have the deed restriction still active at the Barnsible Registry of Deeds.
And they're not allowed to...
What's that?
Then they're not allowed to do an ADU.
Well, that's the point, is like, do we want to allow someone who has an affordable accessory deed restriction a mechanism to get out of that and just rent it regular, or do we want to say, sorry, you took the bite of the apple a long time ago, you have the affordable accessory apartment, you have the deed restriction, you're stuck with that?
Yes.
And that would apply also with restriction for family-related, so?
No, what I was saying about family-related is, I think there's a lot of units out there that people, family member has passed away.
What do they do with it now?
And what do they do with it now? And they've been taking, and when they do their inspections, they end up requiring them to take something out. But instead of doing that, the unit's already there. It's already, they've already spent the money on it. Let's tap into that. But again, it may have been done under some special permit relief, you know, already given. Obviously, they're all affordable. All family-related have a special permit, but maybe they got some other additional relief or something. We just want another mechanism to convert, and it's through special permit, I don't think it's all that complicated, but to convert from a family-related to a regular, maybe we just call them rental accessory apartments or something, you know, maybe we clarify that. We don't set a limit on the rent, it's just the rental accessory.
Right now, there's no mechanism.
Right.
It is what it is. If you have ADU family-related, it's ADU family-related. Yeah.
Right, and when that person leaves, the special permit says, you gotta take out that. But we don't, we want to give them an opportunity to say, no, we don't want you to do that, we want you to convert it to a rental unit because you already have spent all the money. It's all there, everything's ready. And you may find that there's some people who've taken out some stuff, who are like, oh geez, all I have to do is put in this small little area again and put that door back up, and I could rent it and meet these requirements.
Okay.
So I have to work with Town Council a little bit more, and Mark and I haven't had a chance to discuss.
The pen ran out of ink.
My brain ran out of thoughts.
Yes, I'm okay with most of that, but I'm thinking like with conservation restrictions. If you want your conservation restriction removed, you gotta pay back taxes. So if there's any, you gotta buy yourself, basically buy yourself out of that conservation restriction. If there's a benefit given, and I'm not sure what that benefit would be for any of those affordability units, and to remove that restriction...
He's saying, don't do it. And that's the question.
Good, I'm not in favor of doing that.
Sorry, once you're in that dead shell, you're not coming out of that shell. We've lost a couple, and it's cost the town, I'm sorry. If it's affordability with a capital A, it's not coming out.
Thank you. I'm good with that.
Sorry. I heard him.
I didn't want to create a mechanism for you to get out of it, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I think the only conversion we're talking about, it sounds like, is the family-related to a rental.
Also, Kathy, you went from 407.6 to 407.8. Is there gonna be a seven, or are we leaving room for something?
No, we're not leaving. It's just a boo-boo.
It means you're human.
That means I'm human.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure we weren't missing section seven. Okay, thank you.
Kathy, are we gonna address the issue of ownership? Remember, there was a conversation about corporations and limited liability corporations? Our bylaw currently says owner and trustee, or owner or trust.
It doesn't...
We don't say anything.
It's just primary residence.
Primary residence.
So it could be a corporation that owns a primary, that claims someplace on Shore Drive is their primary residence.
And then that person, whoever's living there, technically needs to somehow be related to that corporation and be as part of the owners. Like in LLC, there's gonna be like the four people or whatever that are listed under it.
I would not issue a permit for that.
Because, pardon me?
I would not issue a permit to a corporation for an ADU. The way that this is written, it says you're a primary resident, so you're listed as the owner, not the corporation. You live there, that's your mailing address. I would issue you an ADU permit if that were the case. But if you're a corporation that owns the property, I would not issue one right now. They could come to the board for relief, but I would definitely not by right issue a permit for that.
All right, so you don't think we need an affirmative statement that you either have to be a person or a trust and not a corporation?
Primary residence covers a lot of, covers a lot of things.
So I own a company. My company buys a house for its CEO to live in. It's his primary residence, owned by his company.
I don't care. You're not getting a permit, I can't issue a building permit. So I'm gonna use that as the criteria.
Why can't you issue a building permit? They couldn't...
The way that the law is written, it has to be listed as your primary residence. So if a corporation... Yeah, but if it's a corporation that owns the property, then I would say, no, I'm not issuing the permit. The Board of Appeals could say, you're wrong, Mark, and you have to issue the permit, and that's where it's gonna go. I'm not gonna do it by right.
What about LLCs?
It's not Mr. or Mrs., it's, you're saying it's an LLC. Mr. or Mrs. could have a...
Attorney told me, put it in an LLC so somebody else don't own it.
Could be in a trust as well, but we would have to have the trust, we'd have to have the list of the trustees. If that name of that person is one of the trustees, then perhaps, I'd have to look closer at it.
The LLC has a president, a vice president, secretary, and all that. Would that be...
It's a corporation.
It's a corporation. It's a limited liability corporation.
Right.
So corporation, the gym scenario, corporation could buy a house.
They can buy a house, but I'm not gonna give them an ADU permit for it.
So the permit goes with the owner, not the resident. Is that what you're saying? Okay, but the Board of Zoning Appeals could change that.
See, that's why I have a problem.
So that goes with state law. It has nothing to do with zoning, in my opinion. That's what the state law reads. Has to be your primary residence, you as an individual, your primary residence.
But it is my primary residence, it just happens to be owned under my LLC. I'm not talking, me personally, I'm talking an individual.
The Board of Appeals could say, sure, you can have your ADU, but I'm not issuing a permit for it.
So they would have to go back and go...
It would have to be a special permit.
Because their property is owned in an LLC.
You could, you could apply to overturn my decision with the Board of Appeals. That's a box that's available on the application, and I'm okay with that.
So if the LLC, so the LLC lists, and again, I apologize, but I'm just trying to, because we're gonna get these questions. I'm the president of the corporation listed in the LLC, and I'm living in a house. Doesn't that...
Well, you're out of... I'm the president, me, the Building Commissioner, who doesn't have that much of a legal background. If you wanted to have Town Council tell me that I'm wrong, then I would take their, I would take their advice. But currently, if somebody approached me and asked me to issue the building permit, I would deny it.
Because of the definition of primary residence, correct?
Yeah, that's...
Playing the role of Doris again?
Dorcas.
Dorcas, thank you. Sorry, I'm gonna get it right again. I haven't seen her in a year, since I missed the last town meeting. Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna mark it up again, get it back out.
Won't be at the next meeting, or?
The next meeting is gonna be full of public hearings, so.
You won't be, you won't be available, Mark, I know. Is it next meeting?
But if any of you have questions, you wanted to email me separately, or email Kathy and I, we could probably put something together.
Aren't we chock full of nuts in two weeks, anyway?
Yeah, we are.
I don't think we're, we're not having an ADU conversation in two weeks, are we?
No, we're not.
We'll give you a substantive one.
This is next meeting.
Mark picked the right time. Mark picked the right time.
I love class sometimes.
As Rodney Dangerfield once said, why don't you call me when you have no class? That wasn't back to school.
I remember.
Okay.
Call me when you have no class.
So when, what are you gonna do with all of this?
I wanna go out with you. Monday, I have class. Tuesday, I have class. Call me when you have no class.
No, ADU.
I'm sorry. We would be March 1st.
March 1st, okay.
Okay. February 1st. Oh.
Thanks, Mark.
I'm good with that.
I'm sorry. February 15th. I apologize. February 15th.
Okay, just so you all know, the little rubber bands, packets, those are the application materials for the hearings that you guys were talking about on the...
Thank you for those.
On January 18th.
Thank you for supplying those in advance.
I've not done my planner report, sorry, but this will let you look through and browse through. I do have one extra set of full-size plans for the subdivision. I gave one, do you want?
Thank you.
Are you waving? Okay.
I just said thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I gave you one, Joanne, but if somebody else wants, because I know you like the full size, if anybody else is interested in a full size, I have one here. You can look at them after.
So our next discussion on this will be on February 15th.
Oh, on ADUs?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
All kind of moving...
February 15th, what?
February 15th.
February 1st.
I'm sorry. February 1st, sorry. Thank you, Kathy. I wrote all this down today when we were talking. I don't...
So does that keep us on track for the process of town meeting, in theory?
Have we committed to town meeting?
I don't, I don't know, but I'm asking if we're on the timeline, anyway.
But we're trying, trying, yeah. Joanne and I had a conversation about it, and we are trying. And I have submitted to the town administration that we may have a zoning amendment. I said, put two placeholders on there for now. Just, I don't see having us two. We may not have, we may have none, but there was like a little wiggle room if we want to break something out or there's something that comes up. So basically, they're gonna close the warrant by the end of the month, which means everybody has the placeholders.
End of this month?
End of this month. That's when they typically do it, the second meeting in January.
That's for placeholders?
Yes. They typically like to see everybody else have their articles very quickly thereafter. They've been somewhat lenient for zoning because they realize that we're getting a lot, we have a lot more public input process that's involved for us. I think the absolute, I wish I had a calendar, I think the absolute last date we could have our public hearing would be the March 15th. Because then we would need to meet with the Board of Selectmen there next Tuesday, which is the 21st. And they may also meet again on the 28th. Typically, they meet that last Tuesday in March to close up and finalize the warrant, which kind of means if we're gonna have a public hearing on the 15th, we have to have a really good idea, at least about all of the the general components, so that I can write the public hearing notice. It doesn't have to be perfect, but by our February 15th meeting, we can still make some edits, I think, on our, on our March 1st meeting. It's very, very tight, and it doesn't give us a lot of time at all, because as we have been talking, our next meeting is chock-a-block full of two fairly detailed public hearings before the board. I think we just need to keep going and maybe see how things gel or don't gel.
Is there, at some point, is a draft of this, even if it's the penultimate draft, is that gonna be posted on the planning board on the town website so that people can read it?
Typically, what happens is, once we have defined it enough to have the public hearing, that goes up on the Planning Department website under, you know, zoning amendments for the annual town meeting.
Okay, and how, so if we have the public meeting on the 15th, I would assume some sort of a draft would be prior to that so people could read it and be prepared for the public meeting?
Yes.
Unless we practice the Nancy Pelosi method of government, which is we pass it before, and then you get to find out what's in it.
Or we could do what McCarthy does and just screw up the whole thing. Either way.
All right, all right.
Either way.
I don't know if we should go there.
Let's continue, please.
So there will be an opportunity for people to see this.
They can look at it now. I mean, isn't our packet...
It's in our packets. I mean, it's in the packets.
Yeah, they can look at it now.
With the red lines and everything.
And I sent it, the packet, to Scott Lejoy.
Yeah, thank you, Kathy. So we've got a tight schedule. Kathy and I have gone through it, and we're gonna keep pressing for the annual town meeting. That's our goal. But we want it to be right.
Exactly.
We all agree, it needs to be right. As right as it can be.
So if you don't make it, what, nothing happens? In other words, we would just continue with our existing bylaw until the fall?
Special town meeting, correct.
Okay.
They take money out of your check, too.
Well, that, yes, because it's so big. It's a volunteer check.
You don't get paid for this meeting.
Okay, moving on to meeting minutes.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to accept the minutes of December 7th.
Second.
I just thought I had one change.
Any discussion? Rule call. Brad Goodwin?
Aye.
Susan Britta?
Aye.
Will Rubenstein?
Aye.
Jim Saban?
Aye.
Juan Crowley?
Aye.
May I have a motion to accept the minutes of December 12th?
So moved.
Discussion?
Second, sorry. Gotta have a second.
Got you.
None? Rule call. Brad Goodwin?
Abstain.
Susan Britta?
Aye.
Will Rubenstein?
Abstain.
Jim Saban?
Aye.
Juan Crowley, aye. Committee updates. Anyone?
I'll go real quick, just to let you know that the Drive-In Site Committee is moving forward with our permitting process. We've had some more meetings where it's 75, maybe even 85% design review now. We've got some articles that we're gonna bring to this board with regards to some of the zoning issues. But Kathy and Oliver, free time, has been working to get this actually across the finish line with us, and...
Didn't we get some...
We are making progress.
Didn't we get CPC funds?
Yes.
CPC kindly recommended our request. We are requesting a fairly considerable amount because, obviously, construction prices...
Six figures or seven figures? Seven. Wowzers.
We've asked, they have, they had $4.6 million in undesigned, and we asked for $3 million in undesigned.
Wowzers.
Also asked for $3 million bonding authorization, so...
An example of the inflation that's really hit in these construction projects, not just this project, but all projects. So just, you know, you're gonna see these 20, 30% increases, and even more on some...
Particularly in a project like this that is so environmentally sensitive, there's only so many types of things you can buy, and you've gotta pay what the market is demanding.
And we're chasing the clock, because there's some changes that are coming regulatory, that we've gotta get done beforehand, otherwise we'll... I don't even wanna think about otherwise.
We're precariously perched. We really need to be going out to bid this summer and starting construction in the fall. And hopefully, we'll meet everything, and the building code won't get ahead of us.
Any other committee updates? I have a couple. One, I was gonna report out on CPC. We've just done that. We did approve 12, 10 proposals, one of which, the largest one was for the park, and we still have money left over. I mean, some of the discussion, I mean, over the years, they've been banking into undesigned, they just haven't been proposals coming forward to ask for the money. And over the years, that has just continued to build and build, and now we have what many of us on that committee feel is a really good project that fits what a community preservation project should be, and we've got the money to do it. And in addition, CPC, I read yesterday that we've got another allotment from the state of about $150,000.
Oh, great.
From, it was just announced the other day. So there's a little bit more that's coming in from the state match. So it's, it's all, it's all good news on that. We had, the RAC had a public outreach meeting, our last, our fourth and last one on December 19th, at the Armored Fire Department up on 6A. And that was the best well-attended of all of the outreach meetings, and they're not getting sued.
I was going to say, because we're not, I live up there.
They're not getting sued. The room was full.
Amazing.
But it was very good discussion, that, you know, around this, that they wanted to learn about it.
But as we know, it shows up.
They wanted to understand, you know, the where and when and how, you know, the typical questions. And I thought the meeting went rather well. So we did have that outreach meeting. This is not a, well, I guess it is a committee update with regard to the Kipcot Commission. Kathy and I met with the executive director, Christie Senatori, Mark Grills was there with regard to regional housing strat, Mary Wagon was there.
Mary was there, yeah.
Mark wasn't there, Mary was there. Their regional housing strategy, they came and gave us a presentation. I asked you today if that presentation had come through.
We didn't get it.
I don't know if Mary's still with us, but...
Taryn was going to request it.
Yeah, and I would, could you please send that to the board members? Thank you. Also, Kathy and I met with the chamber, Mary Vilbon and Jamie Viera, to talk again about seasonal workforce housing. You know, they ran into a bit of a problem at the last zoning Board of Appeals meeting with regard to one of the hotels. And we, we have offered to help them move forward to, to, and they're going to crank up that partnership, the community partnership, that they started a year ago. And I've indicated to them that the planning board will be more than happy to engage with them.
What do they, what kind of help do they want from us?
They're, they're, they haven't outlined anything in writing yet to us. They thought about asking maybe more than the 15%, and we, Kathy and I both, and Mark was there as well, said, what's wrong with the 15? You don't even use that now.
Correct.
So then we talked a little bit about, perhaps, well, then it's the total number of units in town, not necessarily segregating them by hotel. So there's a whole series of things that they're going to come back to us on. There was just an open discussion on some concerns they have, and they're looking for some help from us. I indicated to them that the issue with regard to the zoning Board of Appeals, problem that was, they recently had, was not a zoning issue. That had nothing to do with zoning. That had everything to do with proper upkeep and maintenance of the, of the, of the, of the particular hotel. So they're going to, we will be, they will be on our agenda in the future, and Kathy